You ready, Alice? All right. Nine o'clock by the commission clock. I'll call this meeting at the Mercer County Commission to order. Any updates to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we add back on to the agenda the Tax Director, Andy Pers. Number three on the other business, right?
Yes.
So two items?
Basically-
Just the Tax Director, Land Use Administrator, and Andy Pers.
And Andy Pers?
So basically remove that line in three? That strike out, remove-
It was striked out. I had removed it yesterday and sent you guys a copy of the amended. But now I'm asking for it to be put back on without the Maintenance Supervisor, just the Tax Director, Land Use Administrator, Pers.
Oh.
Okay.
Question I have before you Samantha, I'm not questioning you, adding it, I agree with that. North Dakota Pers, is that for, just for the Maintenance Supervisor? Or is that for total discussion on North Dakota Pers for our county?
It'll be just, for what I'm asking, what we're discussing today is for the Tax Director, not for the Maintenance Supervisor. And it's just gonna be regarding her, Andy Pers and her-
Okay. So Andy, Andy Pers for Tax Director and Land Use Administrator-
Yes, please.
And cross off Maintenance Supervisor.
Yes.
The reason I ask that is we also have a letter from Wanda Knutson regarding Pers. And I didn't know if that was included here.
Oh yeah, no, that's not in, that she just wanted you guys to have for some study.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So number three is North Dakota Pers, Tax Director, and Land Use Administrator.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Same question again, different person. We have also a letter from the law enforcement regarding Pers. Are we discussing that today or is that still lined up?
No, that's still lined up because we are still investigating that portion.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then I would, you made a recommendation to add those. Mister Chairman and Board Members, I would like to add, just as for announcement, North Dakota Pers for Mercer County. Just an update about where to get some information on that.
Any other additions? Seeing none, I'll take a vote or a motion?
I'll move to accept the agenda with the corrections or additions on there.
Okay, motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Minutes from the August third meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Liza, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean. Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Marv?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, the August eighth special meeting, minutes?
Mister Chairman, we do have a spelling correction. Uh, down at the, what the heck is it? Anyhow, down about, almost three quarters of the way down, it says Mercer County and McLean Counties?
Oh.
Clean.
Just mean. M C L E A M.
McLean is spelled.
No, no double C in that?
No.
We may pronounce it that way, but-
Right.
Yeah, we may, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
Mister Chairman, if you just would, go one second, I'm sorry. I was looking for where we approved the payment for the dispatch center.
That would've been the meeting before.
Yeah. We didn't approve anything additional on Jim's request, we had approved-
Yeah, we just did the number one.
The number one in the-
And that would've been on the one prior, that we approved it, the meeting prior on the-
August third?
August third, yep.
Yep.
Okay, never mind, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction?
So moved, Mister Chairman.
Motion by Wayne, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza? Any discussion, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, review and approve bills.
Trying to find a parking spot?
Like, I don't know what's going on. Something, there's something on the end.
We all said that.
We didn't hand you any dividends when you came out?
No, he got the pad, though.
Yeah.
Any guy carrying a camera's gotta be-
Yeah, anybody carrying a camera, tear his camera apart. See what's in his filter.
Cause that's Social Services, that's that.
Sure, is that the one that's still standing? No, it's Social Services.
Cause that is gone, right?
Yeah, that's what they're gonna need to do.
Right. So is that the one that we were trying to get him to buy?
Action House, yes, sir. I was gonna say, do you think they're-
I'm like, does that's what we call it that?
Maybe the last ones actually have it in their name.
Probably, yeah, I've just never heard us call it that before.
Turn the text, what the name of? Get out the account number matches too.
See, it's always in the name, right?
That's right. So make it a good one.
Samantha, a question, well, we didn't answer today, but we have Custer Health Nursing Hours, we see this all the time. Is there any way to get where we are as far as what we budgeted and what's left? I don't know if you got the date, but Custer Health Nursing Hours? Cause it's, it's a thirty-eight hundred dollar bill every month, so.
And I believe we-
Depending on what she's doing.
Yeah, I believe we budgeted about sixty thousand.
You didn't try to jump in and see how perfect you?
I knew I turned-
See what happens?
Turned your stage around this morning. You were looking, you liked your question.
You'd have a good audience, too.
Get over the camera.
You'd be more versed in knowing that anybody here, am I reading this right?
Yep.
We are obligated to provide-
Cause a lot of times they come in without them.
Okay, I knew how to probably get more than I wanted to know.
You asked, Jean.
You gave it to him in both firsts. I was wondering how long this is gonna take.
How far was gonna make it, right?
Made it all the way to the end, but not quite to the edge. Wow, some of that stuff just, wow, okay.
Imagine if we had to pay full prints on that stuff.
Right. Stuff is not cheap.
Mm-hmm. That's our last thing, interesting.
Oh, trying to be sneaky. Somebody must be moving barricades or something. Damn, they got it.
Don't they know it, you'll see it?
Glad I seen that.
So miscellaneous reoccurring.
Description?
So Alice, on this, um-
Sort of kind of, but maybe, sort of kind of a maybe bill.
This I State Drug Center, on the voucher sheet, it shows a credit for the core, was that returned? I just don't see it on the invoices.
It's not on the invoice?
Well, I mean, it's charged on the invoice, then I don't see-
One stating that we returned it?
One stating that it's returned.
I think it's not on the invoice, they returned it, they received it.
Right.
Well, I thought she was looking, I didn't look at it. I thought she asked, oh. She was gonna answer his question.
Oh yeah, cause it's on there, that's the second line.
That's where it's charged out because it's a thousand something and then four sixty to the fifteen hundred and then you get to the end and on the voucher it shows it as a credit. So I don't know if that should show us a charge until we actually receive the credit.
Kind of credit, probably.
Yeah, it should show a charge until we get that credit back.
So we're gonna hold this one out, pay this then?
I don't think we hold it out, I just, maybe, this is probably not credited yet. We might pay that bonus plus the ten ninety-two and then whenever we return that core, then we can get that credit.
Maybe they didn't do, deliver the core yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes you have to do the fix on it and then you get the credit for the core.
Good catch there Travis.
Yeah, good job.
Let's look at the nomenclature.
I don't believe it. We will even talk about that.
I can't imagine we'd get to that level.
It's not so long sometimes. I had a vendor send me a bill, says thirty days past due. Said we haven't even gotten parts yet. And I went and asked him, why would you put this on the statement? Oh, that's just what our system does. I said, yeah, but it kind of rubs people a little bit that I'm not-
No one's gonna pay attention, anyway. Yeah, I've gotten, had a close bills before and it says on the bottom sixty page, that it's sixty days past due and I'm like, this is the first bill I've gotten. How could I be, two months past due?
That was the first bill I got and I hadn't even received parts yet. Samantha, I'm gonna have to go eat my sweater.
Are you cold now? Tell me to turn it back up.
No, don't turn it back up. Do not do that. We won't do the yo-yo.
Try to keep you awake.
It will.
Probably cause more bathroom breaks, too.
Samantha, just, uh, waiting, I'm waiting.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like you to consider, on next meeting's agenda, adding the, I think it was words for it. Just went over my mind as I was looking at a bill. Oh, the tribal rezoning that they requested, I just want an update on the tribal rezoning issue that we had about three meetings ago. Rezoning that they requested, I just want an update on the tribal rezoning issue that we had about three meetings ago.
I'm just wanting to say that I bring it up.
That's why. We asked for a thirty day extension and then upon some information.
I'm sure we passed that.
Well, there, there must have been something that occurred. Or did they?
Mine and?
More.
And that's the issue also, thank you.
Throw another one off.
I don't know if they just said that's the final one.
It is generally how it is. I've done that several times and I asked them to go up to our local vendor. I asked the sheriff and the sheriff switched and he did, he did a really good job, very good. That was just recently, that took two years. Either meeting with. The mayor and the sheriff. They just.
A lot of it was for bad.
It really has to do with. I'll, I'll get you the information.
I just, yeah, I don't.
I asked for a response, I just. I'll get you one. I have pursued that and received a response, it all was. It's kind of funny because I went down to. East End, Conical, I heard it's called, and asked them to submit it because their tires are typically a government price or else. And asked them to submit it. Trying to. They're trying to promote business, you know, and then all of a sudden you're like, mm, it's like, really? And the other vendors make, oh God, why not? Pursued that pretty badly. I'll see if I can recall what the answer was. Remember after I pursued it with the sheriff.
Yeah, I know, so get a free tail stand. Isn't that, you know, that's what it is?
He said why not, absolutely.
I thought that was your.
Yeah. I'm not sure I'm there.
Right, like, I didn't know about this place.
Basically when you open an account and make something, I don't know.
Oh, really?
I mean, I used to, I haven't seen it in a long time, but. One time we bought furniture and they threw a fight to the screen. At the time, we didn't have one, so it was a great deal.
Okay, there you go, what a bonus.
Close the deal.
Right, well, you're gonna throw that in, I suppose.
Yeah.
That's your painting, right?
It was laying here, so I don't know if that's.
I thought I brought two pens, I don't see the other one. The reason I'll bring two is because Shannon's apartment, what if one quits?
Then you stop writing.
Hey Carmen.
Morning Carmen.
Morning.
Is that vaccine in that one?
Hmm?
Was it for?
Yes, it's vaccine.
I'm not a medical person.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
What was wrong with the door straight under your glasses?
It was wrong filling.
Huh? What?
Answer.
All denied.
All denied.
Answer more slowly.
Do I need to articulate?
You know, we do have a service for interpreters.
It'll be billed, but.
It'll be billed, it's per minute.
I was at a budget meeting for a different company once. And there was a question and one guy was explaining it. And he was explaining, he said, that's how we do it in Texas. And the guy asked the question, there, I will answer you very simply. They were good friends too.
Were. And sometimes it's not what you say, it's how you say it.
You made a good point. Choose a cell phone bill for Matt, that piece of the road department.
Yeah, so what you're asking?
Yeah.
Why? Do they have like ten phones or? Because there should be really no charge.
I will pursue that.
If I had a cell bill, I'd make it real crazy.
I think, I think every one of the drac- road reers has a cell phone that can pay for it.
And that's fine, I mean, that's what I wondered.
I suspect, I will check that out.
Ten phones or?
Yep, this, so he can contact them in any, wherever they're at, any project. Plus the two supervisors.
Did you contact your server about the.
Crime? There's still some, um, concerns with crimes nine one one, we just wanna make sure that it's on. That's all, that's all that I have left to switch around.
So, but you've talked to?
Doug Westerman. Doug Westerman?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm Doug.
All right, is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Gene, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion on the bills? Say none, Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Mark?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Social Service Building, City Lot and Auction House, are we setting a bid letting for that or did we set one? I don't think we did, did we?
Yeah, and we haven't received anything.
Haven't received anything?
Yeah, and I, we also reached out again to Chip and his wife and they haven't received anything back.
And the City Lot, did we talk about putting a sign up? Has that been done?
I spoke with Jim and our.
Thanks.
I drove by it this morning and I seen a. For sale sign on the lot.
Okay.
And I'm referring to the City Lot, I don't know about the Auction House or the Social Service Building, okay.
Any thoughts how we proceed on any of these? I mean, we'll have our, is it October or November? We have our annual kind of November?
We have it in the paper currently too, right, so.
Question on the Auction House, the reason I'm asking this, I was in Bismarck yesterday and even though things, you can look them up on the web and whatever, you drive past these lots or buildings that are for sale and there's a big for sale sign, Century Twenty-One, whatever the case is or whoever it is. Do we wanna put a sign in the window of the Auction House also? There's a reason that they put signs on all that through all the driver buy-in, it just reminds people every time they drive by. I think it's worthwhile, otherwise it's a, it's a good source of advertising.
I don't think it would hurt.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't think that it would hurt, but also I don't know, like, what you guys have, if you have an idea, because he was supposed to be contracted to take that building down.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Is that still a option of what you guys would like to do or?
Well, I'm trying to recall wh- if there were issues with the building.
We did asbestos removal and then it was a dilapidated building that came back, so, original thought process was to tear it down and then we had inquiries in possibly selling it, but.
Was this the one with the shared wall?
I believe it was.
Right?
Right.
They had the shared wall with the, with the bar. And I think that was our hesitation.
Oh, uh, we have a shared wall with the resident, not the bar.
How was that Jim?
There's a pri- Jim, can you, am I correct on that? The bar is, we don't have a shared wall with the bar, we have a shared wall with the private resident that lives to the east of the Auction House.
Yeah, correct, but if you recall, you've got a contract with C and L to tear it down, so.
Right.
Right.
You already proved that, so. And he looked at it, so, went before he gave you his proposal.
Right.
And I think that's still in, in effect, isn't it?
The contract's still in place, so I guess.
Right, I think the only thing we had is, we actually had someone who showed interest in purchasing, so we were. I, I don't know how official it was, we more or less put it on hold, tearing it down, but I agree with what Jim's saying, we have a contract to tear it down, so.
It's the same gentleman that.
Right.
Yeah.
Was interested.
So at this point, is he gonna proceed with it or was he waiting for us?
Samantha was.
We have tried to reach out and reach out and we just sent an email saying that, you know, you guys need to either make a decision and we still haven't heard anything, so, I don't know at this point if, like, that's why I'm bringing it up again, is if you guys still want to tear it down, maybe we need to get Todd involved and I don't know what the legalities are in pursuing the teardown and how long it's been since the contract was signed and.
Well, and.
What we can do to kind of put some pressure on that.
Well, right, Mr. Chairman, I know the, there was talk about the, the city, that he was gonna purchase, this through the city was a lot smoother and cleaner way of going, well. Same situation, you don't get a response on, on, from the mayor or the city council, I would say, and so we're sitting here kind of limbo, but that, that was kind of the gears that were there that held everything up because.
So he wanted the city to purchase it and then?
Right, and he would purchase it through the city. And then he would purchase it from the city. It just was a cleaner way of going about things.
Can we ask Todd or someone to send a registered letter to the, to the proposed buyer, say if there's no response by a certain date that we're gonna proceed with the contract to have it removed?
I think, no, I think, I think that'd be the best way to go. And, I mean, we've been dealing with this for a couple of months, I don't see why we couldn't have that due at the next.
Winter's coming.
Next meeting, September seventh.
Well, that's my concern, you know, as we wanna.
Absolutely. Send notice to him, if there's no response by such and such a date that we're gonna proceed with the contract to have it removed.
So if we, if the letter is sent out with a notice of, let's see, because you want a yes or, I mean, you want this by the next meeting, so my response to him, or Todd's response to him should be, if we maybe want a response no later than. I would say the end of August then, if the seventh is our.
Well, yeah, we'd want it on our agenda for the September seventh meeting, so, I'd say September second.
Right. Second.
Yeah.
And I'd like to have that as a, my suggestion is a registered letter so we know he received it and we get a signed statement that he did so.
You gonna put that in a formal motion, Mark?
Yes, I move that we send notice to prospective buyer of the Auction House, that he must respond by September second, if he wants to pursue purchasing, if we have not received an answer by that time, we will proceed with removing the building.
Motion by Mark, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
Well, again, once again, I mean, why, we went with the sale because it's, I, I don't know how much money it's gonna take to take this down, but that, that looked a lot more favorable for us and the taxpayers versus, uh, tearing it down, but if, if, like you said, if the, winter is coming, we need to move, you know, so.
And the other thing with that is that we still pay city utilities base rates until that's removed.
Right.
And their specials too.
And I asked her what she's doing, she doesn't, she's not even sure where they're at either, or if she's spoken. She can't get any clarity on whether the city wants to buy the lots and the building, so.
Gee.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them thing, okay.
Yeah, we need an ending for it.
I don't disagree with you Wayne, but at the same time.
Right.
The longer the building sits there, we're gonna end up. The longer the building sits there, we're gonna end up, well, everyone throws a liability thing in there, but we'll have, uh, also, maintenance that we're gonna have to do on it, you know, how long can it sit there with absolutely nothing going on, and pretty soon we're gonna have water leaks, and it's gonna deteriorate to the point where we can't even sell it, and still gonna have to tear it down, but I would do agree with you, Wayne, I'd rather see someone buy it.
Right, yeah.
Well, and we need to make sure we fulfill contracts too, if we have them before the end of the year, I would assume.
Yeah, we gotta look at how, what the length of his contract is, and, and, uh, you know, if it's still, uh, if there's a deadline or not a deadline on that, because.
The person to demo the building?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think there was.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
How about the Social Service Building now, Mr. Chairman?
I mean, the only thought I could think on that one is if we entertain an RFP for, uh, Realtor's Services, I mean, that's gonna be the best way to do that one, we'd have to settle on a, on a listing price, but, um, my thought is, we can't just choose a Realtor, we should probably have a request for proposals, or interview Realtors, so we're not considered singling anybody out, or choosing one over another.
Yeah, there's a century code regarding, telling us how we can go out for that, um, we have it advertised right now, when is, was there a due date or anything ending date for that advertisement?
Today.
Today?
Yeah.
So we could proceed today, or we could wait till the next meeting to, or should we just start, where you think?
I think we should just do as Travis indicated, do, uh.
We, we've kind of had it out there, sitting out there as an option for many months now, even though we, we formally put it in the paper, you know, so I think, like Travis said, I think we, we're gonna have to go that route.
Let's move forward with what the century code says we can do as far as getting an outside Realtor and advertising it?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we, want that information for the next meeting?
Yeah. And we can make a decision at that time and advertise it properly.
What are the requirements to obtaining an RFP for an outside Realtor? I know, that's, that's what we're gonna have for the next meeting.
That's what we're asking for, for the next meeting.
I've read it, but you know what, if it's not pertaining to anything, you just pass over it.
Okay, any other discussion on County Lots? If not, we'll move on to Carmen.
Mine won't be short.
Promise.
Yes, I do.
I'm just being facetious.
I know. Right, okay, okay, Oliver County signed the, uh, five-year joint powers agreement at their last meeting, and I have to bring it to you, because they've signed it, and I know, this is the preliminary budget, and I know that the position, you know, what I'm asking is, because this would be, uh, they signed it with, the only thing that really changed is the wage because of two people in my office. So in order for you guys to sign this, um, what I was thinking, because then it, you know, in the motion to put a provision in there, that if the assistant position is not approved in the budget, then the wage will go from the eighty-one dollars down to the forty-eight thirty-five per hour for one person. And then that way, we've got that in place, and then you guys can do what you need to do in the budget.
Makes sense.
And that's what I'm, yeah, and then that way, I've got it signed, we've still got a contract with them, whatever happens, and I think it's important, because Oliver gives a lot of support to the nine-one and the EM position, we don't wanna lose it.
Well, we were kind of discussing that when we were going through the bills, we're like, we're really happy we don't pay all this.
What's that?
We're really happy that we don't pay a hundred percent of all that stuff, and it's mutually beneficial.
Oh, everything. They've been doing it for, you know, twenty-five years.
Yeah.
And we couldn't be where we are without them, so, so I guess what I'm asking for is a motion, and, um, I've loaded up.
I like that, thanks.
I just made a couple copies for you guys to look at.
Perfect, thank you, Carmen.
Yep. And then that way, and then we'll work.
It's perfect.
Yeah. Carmen brings efficiency.
Yeah.
Nice.
So, it's more detailed than we would have known, good job, you are a good detail person.
Well, I gotta make sure, you know, I wanna protect Oliver, and I wanna protect us, and I wanna give, you know.
Yep, I started writing one down, and hands down, it's way better prepared.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Mercer Oliver County Joint Powers Agreement as presented, with provisions that if the assistant position is not approved, then nine-one-one slash EM hourly eight, wage of eighty-one dollars an hour would go to forty-eight thirty-five an hour.
Okay, motion by Liza, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Marv, any discussion?
Yes, um, Oliver County does understand this, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
And they, they've approved it already?
I just wanted that on the record.
Yep. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Liza?
Aye.
Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Thanks, Carmen.
Thank you, Carmen.
I'm gonna have the chairman sign both copies, and then that way, we each get a, each county gets an original.
Do you wanna keep this?
No, I'm good. You're a paper person.
More paper.
Now, Alice, sign it, whoever.
Yes, I have it on here, but Sam, if you wanna sign it, just, uh, cross that out and sign it.
Cross it out, put my name.
Yes, yes.
The Steve, it's from Carmen, we're at six and a half minutes.
Okay, so I try.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carmen.
Thank you.
Yep.
We try to be good.
Well, should we take a quick five-minute recess before we talk about roads?
What's the difference between a five or a quick one?
Are we on, is it New York Matt, or is it?
Excuse me, Alice. Marv asked what's new. International with John Deere. Yeah. One of our bigger farmers had a kid repairing his, agreed to be comping the pavement, John Deere, the kid says, I think I got the problem fixed, here's the farmer's, you better be sure, because if that problem comes back, you come here next time, it's gonna be better. I'll go check it. That's a story. I'm different, not seeing Johnson out there.
Oh, yeah.
I was looking around for a little bit more, but, you know, Chalk Fest is starting up here, and given a choice between covering more in the county budget discussions, and eating a lot of food, and the Chalk Festival probably, probably gonna side with the latter, so.
I think the Chalk Festival would be much more entertaining.
Oh, yeah, I think any one of us would probably choose to stay.
We're all the way up to the ten o'clock.
You done well, I'm glad you saw that break, yeah, Marv's just like, you know, I'm sure if I feel it, there's a few other.
Us, old guys feel it too.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, gosh.
More.
Who said us? I did. Us, old guys.
Sounds fine, but for the. You can also go with.
Yeah, he, he keeps sipping on his cup there, so.
I met some Enzies up in Golden Valley, but they didn't say they were related to you, in fact, they were trying to deny it.
I, I imagine so, they're much taller than me, too.
Oh, yeah.
I'm the puny Enzie.
You're the runt of the litter?
Runt of the bunch, yeah.
It's like when I ask my, uh, tenant or, you know, order, and adjectives are important, is if you'd rather be a bidget giant or a giant bidget, well, what's the difference? I'm gonna have to figure that out. Would you rather be a small, large person, or a large, small person?
Small, yeah. Well, they didn't gang up and, gang up on you, did?
It depends on the people around you, all bidgets and giants as well, because, and rather be the, the giant bidget, if everyone else is a bidget as well, or if everyone else is a giant.
Look where you started.
Trying to find the silver lining there, huh?
Yeah.
Maybe you need more information than.
Yeah, I was, I was working on, uh, more of a logic and, uh, also, uh, I guess, English lesson, so to speak. You ready?
Yep.
Okay, uh, we reconvene the Mercer County Commission meeting, um, we got road issues on here, at the ten o'clock.
All we have is that bid letting, uh, he gave us a paper, he sent, I think, oh, you guys got a copy and an email, they wanna purchase a blade, a Little Falls machine.
Okay.
The blade that they presently have, they purchased several years ago for only a thousand dollars, and it's not the right size for the machine, and it's not tall enough, where they can push the snow, so they wanna get a blade that's adequate, or more adequate, and matches the machine, and all their stuff would be, uh, all their equipment for, for that would be, uh, up to date, as far as not using a second-hand or something, so, his bid for that is, this bid is only good for the end of the day, we have to choose today, eleven thousand one seventy-five, what's the bid?
Say that again, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat that, price again?
I'm sorry, I should've made a copy of this, uh, eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, this title of the, he has the new twenty-twenty-two Little Falls machine, GV dash ninety, I'm not sure what that is, and this is from John Deere, for a new snow plow blade, it looks like, and their budget item, uh, lease purchase of equipment is line six fifty-two, and they have right now a hundred and sixty-seven thousand in there. Did they pay their truck owner there already, or?
The lease payment?
I think we paid that truck payment, what, the last month, was it, or?
We just got done approving it.
Yeah, it was.
It just came through today.
Oh, was it today?
Wasn't that in our deal today, I don't, I can't remember the total sum, but there was a deal about a truck, oh, that was just for the license transfer.
Yeah, I'd say that was not the lease payment, I wish it was.
Yeah, yeah, that went through last month.
I'd say, I think that was last.
Went through last, last month or the last meeting?
Yeah, or, or last meeting. So this, this, the date of this paper is seven thirty-first, so it's, uh, it doesn't include the a hundred and sixty-seven balance, I don't get that report till the end of August, so I don't have that, so no, this is as of the end of July.
July.
July, yeah.
But we should be, we should be fine.
Yes, yeah. So what's, uh, the status of the, um, the old plow? Did they use it? Yeah.
It works, doesn't work as well as it could, you'd probably have to drive slower, I'm not sure, but.
What are they going to be doing with the old plow?
That hasn't been resolved, I imagined that they would sell it.
Okay.
It's not part of this proposal, but.
Just asking.
Doesn't look like there's any trade-in value for it, and if they only spent a thousand for it several years ago, it wouldn't be a whole lot of income there.
Okay.
That's all the information I have.
Okay, is there a motion to?
With that, with that information and recommendation by the Road Department, he's at jury duty today?
Yeah.
Could not be in here.
Yeah, seen that.
So, with the information base that was handed to me, and the recommendation of the Road Department, I move that we approve the purchase of the new plow for eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any discussion?
Uh, the way it looks, is, Marv, I thi- I believe it's just the wing section.
Yep.
Right? The, probably the post and the, and, and the wing itself, so, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else with the Road Department? We could probably talk about the levy fund for roads, since we're kind of on the road topic, any other business?
Yeah.
Did I put that on there, Samantha?
Yeah, I did, I put them over.
Okay.
All of us have.
Anywho.
That might, that might wanna be covered and included when we talk about the preliminary budget review, because we're gonna be covering it at the same time when we walk through that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So, don't wanna duplicate and repeat.
Wanna talk about the Tax Director, Land Use Administrator, Administrator Wage?
We have plenty of time, we have till ten-thirty, right?
Yep.
Cindy couldn't be in here, maybe she's there?
She's a, she's on the jury duty list, too.
There's quite a few, that's kind of why we're back and forth on this whole agenda, too, so, um, we're trying to make accommodations, but also requests, she wants me to, um, and, and it was an oversight on my end, it is, um, listed on our preliminary budget worksheet, that she was requesting a certain wage, and then what I had stated in, during the hearing, is that, or during our, um, discussion, what I was recommending, so she wants us to go back and put on, uh, the worksheet, what she's requesting, and along with what she's requesting for gen. And I just included the seventy-five cent, and like I said, with how I figured hers, I, ultimately, I think what her, what I'm trying to understand here, is that she is upset that she's still sitting at a level one, so, I was trying to justify that on bumping her by a wage chart, which I included in an updated one, that I had in my office, that was, I was under the assumption, was updated with all of the cost of living raises the last few years, but it was not, so, I included the cost of living raises in this new salary chart, and you can see that she's still sitting at a level one.
And, and I, she had sent me a thing too, telling me that she was in jury duty, and didn't, requested that we didn't make any formal action until she had a chance to attend, but I think we could still kind of discuss it, what she wants to come in and, you know, answer any questions that we have, or defend what she was. But I think we could still kind of discuss it, what she wants to come in and, you know, answer any questions that we have or defend what she was trying to do.
Correct. She said that she had some information on how she.
Came up with her number.
Calculated her, her wage, and I had requested that information, and I think she was trying to get that to me yesterday, but with, of course, you know, everybody's job.
Okay.
So she's currently at a level one?
Currently, she's still at a level one.
Can I?
Yes.
My numbers could be inaccurate, but I disagree with that. First thing that I think we need to do, if you guys wouldn't mind, is she wants to combine her land use administrator fee and her tax, director of tax equalization pay. She gets two, two pays, okay? And the reason she wants to combine it, the one that she only, it's only she gets, which one is that? Is the land use administrator, that's the one that's?
The P and Z is a thousand ninety-five.
Per month, okay?
On top of her salary.
On top of her regular salary, so I take a thousand ninety-five times twelve, and that, that's on top of her salary. The way it is right now, because that's a part-time position, correct, I mean, she's not getting any pers or those benefits because of that. So I think the first thing we want to decide, when we decide how much, before we decide how much we want to adjust her pay, is if we want to include that. Because if you include that pay with your other pay that she gets, she's going to be earning almost seventy-two thousand a year. And that is not step one. So let's decide, do we want to include that thousand ninety-five a month with her regular salary? She's working forty hours, okay? You can have as many titles as you want, but you're only working forty hours. You know, it doesn't mean that you get forty thousand for this title, forty thousand for this title, forty thousand. This got to do with the amount of time spent.
So her wages combined, it would be seven, just over seventy-five thousand. Seventy-five, ninety-two, twenty-four.
So. Seventy-five, ninety-two, twenty-four. So what I'm, first, I think the reason I say, do we want to combine that and pay the benefits? I, I've got a question, Marv. I mean, she has P and Z evening that she has to be there. So, I mean, if she's only putting in forty hours, will she take time off from her other job in order to get forty hours? I mean, she puts eight hours in here and then she goes to P and Z, she'd be putting in over forty hours, wouldn't she?
Well, right now, she's not using two different time sheets to separate the, the two. So she's, and she is, after speaking with her, she's stated that she's just pretty much working them side by side now. So, you know, even in her day-to-day, eight hours, she's still working on P and Z stuff, so.
Oh, yeah. So, so it is included in, in her normal, regular day activities.
So, I just want to clarify a few things. She is a hourly position.
Right.
So if she works over forty, she's eligible for overtime, which my assumption would be when she has a week of planning and zoning where she has an evening meeting, she flexes her time, either leaves early or comes in late that week to kind of stay at forty, because I mean, I don't know if she's recorded any overtime or not.
I think this is something that she probably needs some clarity and direction.
Clarity and direction. That's why I bring this up. So if, if we have a set wage on her main duty, if we do a certain amount per hour for her primary duty, and then we do a certain dollar an hour for planning and zoning and a certain dollar an hour for tax director, those would be a combined hourly wage that she would make over all her hours worked. If we do it that way, then I believe you would be required to pay pers on that hourly wage, because it would be over everything. From what Marv said about the so much per month, if that is just a lump sum included in her benefits or her wages, then we would have, and I would need clarity on this, we would have the discretion to either pay retirement on that or not, because it's a.
But that's kind of what we've been doing now.
That's what we've been doing, so. What I'm getting at is, and we might, and I don't think we should take action now, because I think we'll need some clarity on the legality.
Yep, yep.
If we said, okay, and it doesn't just have to be Cindy, let's just.
Well, Jim, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing. So if you have an entity or a position that has added duties to another position, you kind of have a base pay for that, and then you'd have a, if they're an hourly employee, you'd have an hourly rate for those additional duties assigned to that individual. If you did it that way, then retirement would always be calculated on that full wage, because that would be their working wage. If, for certain positions, if you were required to get certifications, then maybe a certification adds two dollars an hour. As long as they maintain that certification, they get that wage. If that person leaves and we start over, then that wage is not included in that new starting position until they have actually got that certification. The reason I bring that up is because as far as the tax director, there's two levels of assessor. There's a level two and a level one. I believe level two is the lower one, level one's the higher one. It takes more time, it takes more experience. So if we set an hourly wage for a certification on a assessor two and a certification on assessor one, regardless of who holds those positions, that would be included in their wage. I know this might be a little confusing, it might have to be put down on paper, so you can kind of see how this works, but it's a route to go into so that we don't break, break any labor laws and then also it's clear on what gets retirement benefits. And I, I think that's one decision we have to make, if we want to do the straight per month. I think it would be our discretion whether we would include that in the wage that gets retirement or not.
And I don't know if this will help or not, but after speaking with Beth from Plain County, her tax assessor, and yeah, does everything that Cindy's doing, and that's all included in his wage.
Okay.
All good.
I could reach out to, I'm sorry, Gene, I could reach out to other counties and see what they do as well, but.
That's my.
Kind of my question, can we, can we statutorily combine the tax director and the land use administrator as one position? I, I'm kind of confused why we have one person doing those two jobs but receiving two wages. That's kind of mind, mind boggling to me.
Well.
Because I knew you would have to step out of your, step out of one office, you'd have to remove yourself and not put down hours for land use administrator and put down separate hours for tax director. How can you say you're doing both jobs and receiving two different wages? I, I mean, this is, wow.
Well, I think it was probably the board's mistake years ago, because land use administrator was on to a different entity. And then when that person retired, that, that land use administration job went into the tax director's position. And that's where it's got separated and probably should have never, you know, as you said, should have probably been combined already at that time. But that's just what happened and, and now today, here we sit, you know.
Yeah, and Todd and I both haven't gotten any information back from wage an hour.
Okay.
So I know that we both have been working on that. But this kind of also pertains to the any pers, why I wanted to put the tax director and land use administrator on it, because if, I mean, the longer we don't approve combining them, you know, the, the more time we're gonna have to go back and calculate that, that pers that we go for, if that's what we have to do. So the longer we wait on this, the more it might, you know, it's gonna affect our pockets.
Right.
Well, I mean, if we approve it now or later, the, the consequences are going to be the same, it's just a matter of how much, you know.
But also, another thing that they're looking at, though, is if the county has to pay her portion, so.
I guess we're right back to the first question I asked, does this board want to combine those two positions? And from what I hear, we may want to do that, but we have some legal questions that need to be answered.
Correct.
Correct.
So I would like to have this put on our meeting for, on the agenda for our next meeting. The question being asked, if we can combine those two positions. We can't move forward with the wage until we know where we're at on that step.
Right.
Okay, is that fair? Gene?
Yeah, because, okay.
I, I took those salaries from, and I'm looking at her salary for twenty twenty-two, it's sixty-one, nine thirty-seven. You take twelve times one, one thousand ninety-five, you add those two together, her salary today, if combined is seventy-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars. If you divide that by twenty-eighty, her salary is thirty-six point oh nine per hour. So that's just information, and it doesn't really apply to anything till we know if we can combine two positions.
Okay.
All good.
So I guess we've essentially put it on the next agenda and we'll, we'll bring it up.
Yes, and hopefully I'm gonna get Todd in here, I mean, he's gonna be here today, so, and he can go over the balance and discuss some decision like that.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sam.
The last thing we want to do is break any labor laws.
Right.
Great.
Right, right. We make enough pers.
Yeah.
In our, in, in our best judgment.
Yes. Okay, so that kind of takes care of two and three, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay. November election, is that lengthy thing, or is that more or less?
No, so, as we have it right now, we are going to be, for the, I think what was decided already earlier this year, was that we would hold early vote for a week here in Stanton, and I just want to kind of throw out a new idea that it would, it costs us over twenty-four dollars a ballot, because we only have ninety-one people show up all week. And the cost of paying all of the officials, that kind of was where we were at with how much it costs for a ballot that we spent all that time on for that week. So my idea is having maybe open two or three Saturdays before the election to have like an early vote, but it would just be vote by mail. So that way, it's only, it would only have to have like one or two from my office here, instead of having a judge and all of the officials that we would need to hold the early vote. I'll get the, you know, concrete numbers on that and see if it would benefit us, I know that it would benefit us, to do that instead of having early vote for a week. But then it's not really a voting poll location, so I don't know how you guys would feel about that.
So when you say the vote by mail, essentially you want to do the normal process, you would do exactly the same process as the mail-in, so.
Correct.
They would fill out the ballot, they would put it in, they would sign off, like they had essentially mailed it in?
Yeah, so when we did early vote, we had to set up machine, the machines, we had to have, you know, everybody here for the, we had to have a judge here, a, two clerks. To respect them. Yeah, and so if we did vote by mail, it would just be between one of us. All they would have to do is fill out and, um, an application, an absentee application, we could give them their ballot, they can put it in their envelope. And then when we had our early vote, four come in to open them, and they could do it at that time, instead of getting the machines out, coming in, registering them and voting and then putting it in.
So essentially, somebody could still come here to vote, it would just be filling out the absentee.
Absentee ballot.
Forms and stuff, and it would actually reduce the number of people that would need to be present at that time. And that would be open on Saturdays?
I would think that, yeah, I would want to hold that from Saturday. I think we were thinking like a nine to one type of hours, kind of. That can always be.
Right here at the courthouse.
Right here at the courthouse, yeah. And then also, we did have a lot of frights about not having two polling locations on the day of the election. And a lot of people were requesting that we have one in season.
So.
Explain to, so that it's on record, the, the, not you personally, the issues you have. The issues you have with having several different polling spots and then costs involved.
Well, of course, the cost is high, and then also it was hard for us to get officials to work for the primary election, even just in one location. So that's a struggle we would have to have, or we would have probably going into the general for two, like, two locations. But if we save money from just being open on Saturdays, and then maybe having the two polling locations on the day of the election, then we balance it out. But then finding workers.
Yes, so to let the people at Mercer County out there know is, one of the big issues is finding enough people to actually work on the day of the election. It's, we, we can say, you know, we'll have one or five polling spots, but you need.
Staff.
The staff to have, what, what, what would you say your minimum at each polling's location is? Five at each polling location, so you need.
Ten.
Ten.
Yep.
And then, could you still get by with one reader, or would you have to have two readers? Like, if you did two posi, two polling spots, could one polling spot close earlier?
No, we'd still have to stay open.
Okay.
There's certain times that we have to stay open. But we would have, we have enough machines to do two locations. So.
Okay.
It's, I'm just, I wanted to put this on there to get you guys thinking about it, and I can get some hard numbers for the next agenda if you want to table it for me, to see, you know, what.
Because absentee ballots come out, what, sixty days before?
Yeah, they're gonna be coming out here shortly.
So, yeah, mid-September?
Yeah.
No, maybe even early September. Which that's absentee, I mean, as far as picking one polling place versus two, essentially could be decided in as late as October, if we could find the staff.
So what is the November voting date?
The eighth, probably.
November eighth, that's why.
I do like the idea, though, of having the Saturday for the absentees, because I think that would help with a lot of people, too, with their work schedules. Even though we have a lot of people that do do the shift work and end up working weekends, I think that might be beneficial for a lot of people, too, who end up, who do have the Monday through Friday work schedule, then they would have the option of coming in to vote, too, if they choose to.
Yeah, because if essentially we've only accommodated ninety-one people for a week's worth of here, if we pick up a couple of Saturdays and possibly a second polling location, that could benefit three times that.
Exactly, yeah.
Exactly. And you'll have a lot larger turnout on your, on the general election than you do on your primary. That's just the way it always runs, too. So it, it'll be a busy time at, or.
The other question I would have on two locations, so if that, let's see. No, because the primary is the ones where decides the city, so there's no city issues on the general, so it would just be county, state, federal.
Yeah.
So any, any location.
Will we look the same for every?
Every jurisdiction.
The only way they would change is if somehow there was a divide in a district.
District.
But we're in one district countywide, so that would not be an issue, so I think the ballots would be the same. So that takes out that issue. But yeah, I guess if we had some, some costs associated with it, it'd be a lot easier to make a decision, but I'd say at this point, we're open to ideas.
Yeah, we were still waiting on some, uh, we were still getting invoices and such, so I did want to come in with some numbers that weren't accurate. So once we get all of that calculated, then I'll come in and present those if we can make a decision.
So right now, we're gonna be doing the mail-in ballot, and they'll be going out, you said, about sixty days. So right now, we're gonna be doing the mail-in ballot, and they'll be going out, you said, about sixty days?
Well, yeah, we'll be sending out absentee applications.
Yep. And then, um, you're considering the Saturday before, having a, um?
Well, I was, I, the idea is two or three Saturdays prior to, you know, the election date.
Can you do it, Beth, more than a week early? You said two or three Saturdays, is that?
Yeah, if you consider it an absentee ballot, then it's no different as the mail-in.
As a mail-in, yeah.
And you can actually set up a polling location for that?
Well, that would be here.
You'd be here, yeah.
Yes, it wouldn't be a polling location.
Technically, it wouldn't be a polling location.
Okay.
But it would be, yeah, open to anybody who wants to come in and fill out their ballot, but it would be represented as an absentee ballot.
Okay.
Yeah.
So basically, you fill out the ballot here as if it was a ear, uh, early voting.
Correct.
But then you turn it into the people, and they kind of hold it, and it gets brought in with all of the absentee ballots that are mailed in.
Correct. We would hold it, we would hold them all with our absentee ballots, and then they would be opened at one time with the absentee.
Yeah, so you'd have that envelope that you usually get with the mail-in. Essentially, they would do that here, and it would be put in that pile, and you wouldn't know any different that it was done here or through the mail.
Right, you just wouldn't be feeding it into a machine.
Correct.
Right.
Which, which people have the right to do. I mean, I did mine through that way and dropped it off, so I didn't mail it.
You could fill out your places drive here.
When I spoke to the Secretary of State's office, I mean, they were a little, you know, they were like, well, how, you know, do you know if your pop, general population would be okay with that? Because they're used to going to a polling location to where, you know, you actually fill out your ballot and you feed it into a machine. So it might be a little bit of an adjustment, um, when they come in, but I think that overall, it's gonna save us.
That's why I'm asking now, is just by process of right, if I'm the guy, um, then I'll wait till it's more in place, if I can do an article specifically with you.
And that would be great.
Oh, I mean, probably it would look.
That would be great, because then if we can, yeah, do some.
I want to make sure I get it.
Yeah, definitely.
Since we're kind of talking about the November election, the measure that we had on there that failed, do we have to do something again to get that on November, or have we missed that deadline?
Yes, we will have to. That'll be for next, next year.
Or the next election? Should it be two years?
It has to occur this year.
Sorry, yes. Because I don't know how else.
Well, because there's a, there's a timing.
Can you put it back on for the general?
I think we can. We just have to make a decision prior to the deadline for the general, and I don't know when that is. I wonder if this is the meeting that we would have to say that we put that on?
Well, I should, yeah, I'll reach out to, I can try calling Brian right now.
Okay. I mean, it's ten-thirty, it's time for the treasurer's report. We could come back to that. I mean, because that pertains to the November election.
Right.
So. Okay, Don?
Hey, Don. I need copies for you guys, so we'll kind of, they'll follow up. It's got a balance sheet attached, and I know I just handed one of those out to you guys, but you guys just seem to have, yeah, you don't have to dig for it in yourself. Thank you.
It's like you've worked with us before.
Amazing.
I've seen your folders.
It's in here, Dawn, page.
Okay, let's do the easy one first. You guys all know I've hired Alice in my office as my deputy. Union State Bank will not let me put her on as a signer for Union State Bank-related stuff unless you guys make a motion allowing her to do that. So that's the first thing I need to take care of, so I've got some minutes to send to Union State Bank so that they will allow her to be on my bank account.
Are you requesting us to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion to add Alice to the bank signature cards for the treasurer?
I so moved.
Motion by Marv, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
We got an FBI, uh, background check. Okay.
Any, any other discussion? Saying none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
Okay, that was, okay, Don, I'm guessing this two-nine-seven-five, I'm really not a hundred percent sure why you guys put it on there, so feed me some questions and I'll see what I can do to answer them.
I don't understand what you just said.
The?
Cause it's on the?
That's the CD interest fund.
Yes, it is.
Yep.
And it's on there, why? I, I mean, I'm just wondering what you guys want to know from me that you put it on the agenda.
I'm not sure that we did. How it got on the, who, does anybody know how it got on the agenda?
I can ask for it.
It was, you guys requested it at the last meeting, so you could understand what goes next down the line.
Okay.
And we had kind of touched on it after.
Okay, I did.
Okay, so if you look at what I handed out to you, um, the landfill interest already rolls into its own account. So it gets automatically added back to that account. It stays with that account. There's no separation.
Landfill, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, landfill, um, is account eighty-fifty?
Yes.
So when you said it goes to that account, goes to eighty-fifty?
Yes, when I deposit the interest, it goes into eight zero five zero one 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 zero, and it's?
Thank you.
It's done, okay? Same way with the weed board. It goes into the two-nine-seven-two account, which is associated with the weed board, so it automatically attaches to that. It stays with that CD. There's no, um, capital credit union. The certificate of deposits in our ICS account do not have their own account number. They have an account number, but not a fund number. So there isn't like any twenty-nine oh-three, twenty-nine, you know, there isn't an account for me to put that interest into, so that interest goes into that general CD account, because there's no way for me to attach it to them. Now, ICS rolls in there anyway. It just doesn't get accounted for the same way. So like, if you look at my ICS account, if I invested a million dollars originally, it's gonna have a million thirteen thousand dollars in there just because the bank rolls it in there. But when it goes over on their side, it gets put into a separate fund, not a separate account, but a separate fund, so it's not attached to that ICS account. So if you look on the balance sheet, you will see the ICS account probably doesn't match because the interest is here, the original money is here in the auditor's office. And that's just the way it's been done, I mean.
Okay, let's just talk about just that one, the ICS account first. Is that a concern, or is there a better way to do it?
I don't think it's a concern as long as you realize that if you look at my balance sheet and it says three million dollars, three hundred thousand, it's not going to be that much if you try to compare it to their trial balance. It will be in two separate places on their trial balance. And I'm actually not entirely sure, the ICS account, the certificate of deposits, and the capital credit eating account must be accounted for in their general fund somehow, because I went over there the other day and tried to find those specifically listed on their trial balance, and I couldn't find them. So I'm guessing they're included in the general fund on the trial balance somehow or other. So, I mean, you can?
If you can't figure it out, there's no way I'd even know.
What, what you just said is exactly true.
Okay, okay, well, that's good. I bet the thousand.
That's the only place that it can be. All the money that we have in those CD savings accounts, last meeting we talked about, we got this money in savings, it's already spoken for. It's already in the, in the funds. It's all accounted for. If you add up all of the trial balances, and then you add, and compare that number to the balance from the treasurer's department, those numbers, if everything occurred exactly at the same time, would be matched. So if we say ICS has two million dollars and the credit union has three million dollars, that doesn't mean that's money that's in savings. That's just where we pooled our money to gain some interest. But all that money is accounted for in every single of the other funds. And I can demonstrate that. I brought a paper with me.
And the only way I see to do that is to separate them out of the general fund, as like a sub-account or something, and give them account numbers, and then I could, fund numbers, and then I could put that interest in, so it would be associated. But it's a lot of work as long as we, I mean, as long as we all understand how to associate it, I guess I don't figure they probably need to go through that extra work.
It's, it's way more transparent. However, let's just say we have a CD of a million dollars, and we assign a number X to it. Next year, that CD, we cash it out, we use it for something, and then we create another CD. Now we have to create another C, another fund number? Seal, so it's not really practical, right?
Right, exactly.
Because the CD numbers, that's just a, it's a holding place, right? And we could CD number at a bank, and they assign a number for that CD, it gets cashed out. Next time, we create a, another CD, it gets a totally different number, so we'd have to create another fund number.
Yes, and that's every year for most of the, most of.
But when we're recre, when we're creating the budget, I'm not adding in any revenue from CDs that we have pulling in CDs. That's just revenue that we have coming in from taxes and our other sources.
So you don't budget based on the interest that we earn?
If it's rolled into the general fund, yeah, she does.
I don't have any interest from CDs into the revenue.
But we just got done saying that on the ICA, just this ICS account, it, that money is probably into general fund. So you didn't have a line item for interest, but it's all, the money's already there.
It's not in the budget, but it's revenue that we receive.
It's already been recognized.
It's recognized at the end of our fiscal year. But there's not a line item in the budget showing that revenue coming in?
No, there is not. But the, the amount that we have in our general fund, that interest is in that, that number. It's added on.
Yeah, it's added on at the end of the year. So like, when we have our end of year and start of year, any interest that was accrued is in that end of year balance.
Cash on hand.
It's just not recognized as a revenue.
Where would that earned interest be reflected?
What the interest is gonna be for the year and use that as a revenue source. No, okay, that's what she's saying.
Jean has a very specific question.
Where would that earned interest be reflected?
The interest gets reflected in the two-nine-seven-five account. So if you were going to go look to try to see what interest has been earned on these CDs, you'd go to their trial balance and look at the two-nine-seven-five account, and that would show you what's been put into, what interest has been earned on these ones that we're specifically talking about here, the ones that don't have associated funds. So if you go on their trial balance, if you look up two-nine-seven-five, I think there's, was it like a hundred thirteen or a hundred seventeen thousand?
Yep.
In interest that's been earned so far.
And we're just speaking of interest, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. But when she cashes out a CD, that's not.
When a CD comes to term, that's not budgeted, no.
And that's what Marv is worried, concerned about, correct? Because you're saying that that money that's in that CD is, is budgeted for already.
I may be corrected based on what she just got done explaining, because she explained, I, I understood her a little better. It's already into twenty-nine-seventy-five. The interest that we receive is all being recorded in twenty-nine-seventy-five.
Except for the two check-in accounts.
Right, for, I mean, for the credit union and the ICS. So that goes into twenty-nine-seventy-five. Now I'm gonna go back to the statement you made, Samantha. The interest, that a hundred and thirteen thousand that's in twenty-nine-seventy-five was not counted when you did our budget? Were not included with our budget revenue?
I don't, well, that would have been the budget that Shanna did last year, she estimated for it. Correct?
It's, it's a non-taxable, or it's a non-tax revenue. And based what I'm understanding is we don't have a line item for interest accrued
Right.
in the, in, in the, whatever current fiscal year we have.
Right.
Which?
So basically, it's bonus revenue that you get?
Correct.
Because it's not actually depended on to run the county.
Mm-hmm. It'd be kind of like, um,
Right.
you know, before the CARES Act and some of those things, those weren't budgeted because they didn't exist. However, this exists, we know about it. Um, is it, is it enough to skew our budget to a certain extent? Probably not, because we?
Interest ain't so great, right?
Well, interest isn't, isn't great, but also you have, um, highway revenue share, you have, um, coal severance and conversion taxes. I mean, we, we make our best educated guess on what those are gonna be. And they may be low, they may be high. So I mean, a budget is a very dynamic moving monster, so to speak. You know, I don't know, eight to ten million dollar budget is a hundred thousand dollars significant? Yes, is it gonna throw our budget off? We could have that much of a fluctuation in those revenue shares easily.
Right, and you said that you believe that Shanna?
I don't know. No, I said, when Marvin was asking if they, if it was used for this year's budget, I said that wouldn't have been, it would have been Shanna that would have done that, so.
For twenty-twenty-two.
And when I look at it, it doesn't look like she did the same thing.
Okay, I want to ask Samantha that question again. So twenty-nine-seventy-five, and I'm gonna talk about, I'm trying to pick the year. I think I need to pick the year twenty-twenty-one, because we're not done with twenty-twenty-two yet. So twenty-twenty-one, let's just say we have a hundred thousand dollars in interest. And that's in Fund twenty-nine-seventy-five. We know what that value is because that twenty-twenty-one is over as we prepare twenty-twenty-three's budget. As we prepare twenty-twenty-three's budget, did we include that CD interest that we had at the end of the year twenty-twenty-one?
No.
If we never, then we have another amount of money that we should be including in our budget.
But if the interest goes right into our general fund?
Wait a minute.
That money just shows the, at the end, correct? You said?
Yeah, I think it?
From twenty, the interest goes into the general fund?
No. I under, that would be my question now. What happened to, where did that hundred thousand go? Did that stay in twenty-nine-seventy-five?
The hundred thousand dollars stays in twenty-nine-seventy-five, but I don't know what they do with it at the end of the year. But it, it's not, the, the money, the original balances in the CD is, is included in the general fund total. The interest, since it's a twenty-nine-seventy-five account, in my opinion, is not a general fund account, right? That's a special fund, right?
Right.
Okay, so the interest is in the twenty-nine-seventy-five account, which is not a general fund account.
So we don't show it as revenue?
No, we show it as revenue. It's just not in the general fund account.
I'm gonna pull up twenty-twenty-two's.
Show me in the budget.
Budget, right.
Where that hundred thousand is.
Because if we're saying, if you're saying that we are keeping it separate, then we should be having a worksheet for just the CD fund, then, showing where it go, or, you know, our revenue and our expenditure or moving transfers in for that. But we don't, we didn't have one last year, and I didn't want to present one this year.
But there was some activity in that account last year, wasn't there? Wasn't some of that money used? Didn't we look at some of that money was used for the specials? And wasn't there some other money transferred out to cover something else?
I don't have my, my expenditure fund.
I don't have my thing here either, but I thought we flipped that up last time.
Yeah, but is, is that the fund that's the sinking interest in which?
Samantha, can you pull up twenty-twenty, it's not that hard. I, I don't have my papers with me. Twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, just look up twenty-twenty-one under Fund twenty-nine-seventy-five and see on the detailed expenditure report, was some money transferred out of there and put someplace else? That would answer our question, right?
You want me to print the detailed expenditure report, or, I mean, we have a paper copy of them, but I don't have.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't need one printed. I'm saying for, for twenty-twenty-one, the detailed expenditure report.
Yeah, I don't have that on the computer. We, we have a copy of them and put filed them, so I can go grab that out of the.
It doesn't take too long?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-one.
Then we'll answer Jean's question.
I grabbed, I grabbed twenty-twenty-two though, too. I wonder if that wasn't?
Grab twenty-twenty-two, well?
Please, Sam.
Yes, please.
Um, well, we'll keep going down this list then, so, okay, so the building and improvement account has its own?
Sorry.
Okay, the building and improvement account has its own fund number, and it also has an associated interest fund number. So that one stays with it. It's, it's associated with that account, it stays with that account. That money stays with the building and improvement. Um, say, the American Rescue Plan? Um, say, the American Rescue Plan is not, but it has its own interest account. I would like to see that money start going into the twenty one oh four, or whatever number, I can't think of what it is right offhand. I guess if I looked at my balance sheet, I would.
It's twenty one oh four.
Twenty one oh four, it has a twenty one oh four, three six one one zero account, which is an interest account. So I would like to see the interest go in there, rather than the twenty nine seventy-five, because then that interest would stay with that account.
American Rescue Plan, what you said, right?
Yep. I looked yesterday, it has its own interest account, so I don't know why we're not putting its interest in that interest account.
Currently, that interest is going to the twenty nine seventy-five.
Yes.
For the board, I want to, just for information, I'm not trying to skew the, just so you help with your thoughts. The ARPA money, we're probably going to get audited for, and it has very specific rules on what we can use it for. As has been explained to me, the interest accrued from that fund does not have those rules.
Right.
That's my understanding, too.
Okay, so I just want to add that. So all we'd have to be, we'd always have to keep track of the American Rescue Plan twenty one oh four. How much is required to follow the rules, and how much we are, have permission to spend? In any way.
And that should be no problem, because the money that we got for ARPA went into the three six nine one zero. The interest would go into the three six one one zero, so they should always be distinct and separate
Perfect.
From this point on, the twenty nine, I mean, I have a spreadsheet of it, so, I mean, I know what's been earned so far, and has gone into that twenty nine seventy-five. If those funds are in that twenty nine seventy-five, I would like to see them moved back to the American Rescue, into that thirty six one ten account.
To the interest account, right?
Yep, from the twenty nine seventy-five, which is where it's been going, back into that thirty six one ten account. So that we know that that money was always American Rescue Plan money, it was interest earned on that money, it was just my, no, that's just my request, I just think that that's the way it should be done, rather than separated out.
So, let's just talk about the ARPA fund, because that'd be a simple one to resolve.
Okay.
We're looking for a motion to that the ARPA interest earned be deposited into the American Rescue Plan, and all interests earned to date also be moved to that. Now we'd have a very clear picture of what is going on.
If that's what you guys think is.
In that same fund.
But, we would.
And it would still be separate and distinct, because it would be in the thirty six one ten and not thirty six nine ten.
Okay, so we would still know what?
The thirty-six numbers, those are just subsections of the twenty one oh four.
Yes, 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 yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so the, the original deposits from the federal government are in one?
Yep.
And the interest is in?
And then she wants the interest in us, in its own one, and not be put into the twenty nine seventy-five, right?
Yes.
And then any monies that are already in the twenty nine seventy-five accrued due to the interest.
And you can still, that thirty six one ten money, you can use for whatever you want to still then, because that is not money that you're going to have to get audited for, I guess, it's right.
As we understand it, yes.
Right, so it's just more so to keep
Yep.
accurate track of what accounts are gaining what interest. Right?
Yep, exactly.
Well, if we can take these one at a time, I'll make a motion that we move all ARPA interest monies earned, Fund twenty one oh four, to be recorded underneath that fund. And all past ARPA interest earned for twenty one oh four, be transferred into that fund.
And when you say that fund?
Twenty one oh four.
I'll second that for more discussion.
Okay, motion by Marv, seconded by Jean, do you have that down, Alice?
Okay.
So I know, Marv, oh, sorry, go ahead, Liza.
Well, I just want to make sure that when you're indicating that fund, you mean that we're just moving the interest that was accrued from ARPA, from the twenty nine seventy-five into the, what count number was it again?
Twenty one oh four. Twenty one oh four, thirty six one ten.
Okay, so it's twenty one oh four, thirty six one ten. Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Twenty one seventy-five is the account that the.
Liza has a good point, she's being very specific, and that's, that's a good thing.
So twenty one seventy-five is where the ARPA money's in?
The interest.
The interest went into the twenty nine seventy-five.
Right now, it goes in.
Not ARPA monies, just the interest that we accrued are in the twenty nine seventy-five right now.
Okay.
And this would be moving any that is in there currently, and then from now on, for the future, for interest on the ARPA, it would have its own account.
Well, ARPA has its own account.
Correct.
The interest, though.
And the interest does, too, it's just that not all of the interest that's been earned on it is now attached to that CD. And it would be now.
Are you understanding, Samantha?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Yes, there's some more discussion, I'm going to go back to what Liza said, she had a very good more specific way of saying it. When I said the interest goes into ARPA Fund twenty one oh fi- four, we might want to include the three six, what was the number?
Three six one one zero, I think, if you want to double check that, Sam, was, oh, yeah, no, I don't have that one.
Is that correct?
Yeah. I heard thirty six one ten.
Yeah, because I don't want you to just spin back into the ARPA, I wanted to go the interest part of the ARPA.
Correct, correct. That, that's, that's our thought process.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, it never occurred, we'll get this stated correctly.
Okay, Jean, are you all right with recalling your second?
Do I second the withdrawal, or do I just agree?
You don't have to, actually.
No, what's the proper way to agree with the withdrawing the motion?
If you had a second, that second has to.
I think the second has to be withdrawn as well.
Just withdrawn?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
I want you to please check that, Travis, because as I understand, it never occurred, so, do you have, would you like the word motion?
The original funds.
I didn't say, she was checking to see if it is the one ten.
Yep.
So I was just making sure.
I'll write this down, so I can try to.
We looked yesterday on the chart of accounts, there was an interest account, so we have to go get my chart of accounts.
This is, I'm just looking at the revenue level currently, but I don't see any other.
Oh, no, we have to.
You have to look in the revenue sheet.
I will go double check with Gwen on the account number, and I will be right back.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I just want to make sure we have it accurate.
Absolutely.
ARPA Fund twenty one oh four, and I have two dashes under it, so the first is, but that's the actual ARPA money.
Correct.
What would that be called, CD, ARPA CD, or? What, we'll, we'll, I, I would, we'll put the number after.
It was money given to us by the federal government, is what it was.
I didn't say it's a CD, correct?
We put it into a CD.
Yeah.
And then I can put in the number, which is, and the other one is ARPA interest.
Correct.
Correct.
And the ARPA interest is supposed to, we are deliberating where we want the ARPA interest to go, we want it to go to, the request is to have it go to what account number?
Fund twenty one oh four, line item three six one one zero.
We believe, but we're just checking to verify it's certain number.
Yeah.
Twenty one oh four, three six one one zero?
Yep, one one zero, we're confirming. All that is, is a line item, underneath revenue, you have different line items that describe what the revenues are, and that's what three six one one oh is.
And that's why, what I'm, Jean, what I'm asking, is I already know the twenty one oh four, that's a given, but I'm trying to get, what the numbers are for both the actual, the, the sub-numbers that go under Fund twenty one oh four.
That's.
What's the one for the CD, and what's the one for the interest?
That's where I'm at.
So that's, that's what I, this box is about.
Yeah. So under twenty one oh four, we only have one line, nine one one, Miss Lys. It probably is another, but it hasn't been used yet.
You said the three six one one zero?
Yep, three six one one zero.
Is the interest.
Is the interest one.
Does it have, what's, what's the other one, the actual ARPA?
Three six nine one zero.
Nine one one zero, yeah, they're the same.
Liza, I'm reading this up, and I'm going to send it out to you through YouTube.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Yep.
So twenty one oh four contains three six one one zero and three six nine one zero?
Yes.
Correct.
Three six.
I don't know if I can.
Is audited and specified, specific use.
Correct.
Making sure that the motion confirms this is going into the other interest.
Because we don't have to keep track of where the interest is going.
Or the expense.
Correct. I mean, we keep track of it, but not to where we could get audited by it.
Can I muddy the water here for me a little bit? So where was the interest on the twenty one or oh four money going to currently?
Twenty nine seventy-five.
Which is just general CD interest.
It's not, not, it's not on the budget.
Okay.
Now, if we do define it this way, it's very easy to add a line item to the budget underneath interest earned, and you write down where it came from.
If there's any revenue, I go off of my revenue detailed reports, so if that was on there, then it's on the budget. If it wasn't on there, I didn't include it in the budget. So when I look back. Yep.
I think that's what you were saying?
Yep, because it includes anything from to date on, and then anything to grab out of twenty nine seventy-five from the ARPA fund, put it back into that account, the interest account.
That's what we're thinking.
So it shows like our sinking and interest fund under twenty one oh three, so that is per revenue. But then when we look at twenty one oh four.
Samantha, twenty one oh three is a restricted fund, we can't use that interest.
I'm not saying we're using it, I'm saying it's on the budget, because you were asking if it was included in the budget, correct?
If it's on the budget, it can only be for paying for our loan.
Correct, that's the capital projects, yes. What I'm saying, though, is if there's any revenue that's on.
Well, it hasn't been made yet.
I'm assuming it's going.
So.
Just a spot.
Yes, right.
Are we ready?
Alice, I'll give you a copy of this after.
Get a text from Dan. Dan sent you.
Okay, we're talking just about the ARPA funds. There'll be another question after I get done, after we get done with this motion. I move all interest earned from ARPA Fund twenty one oh four be deposited to Fund twenty one oh four dash three six one one zero. And all interest earned to date from ARPA Fund twenty one oh four that has been deposited in Fund twenty nine seventy-five be transferred into Fund twenty one oh four dash three six one one zero.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Is that covered?
Yep. Mark's for me.
Okay, Marv, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Trusting us.
He's going to say aye with confusion.
Okay.
I like what Alice is doing, she's taking, taking a picture of it, right?
Yep.
Good idea.
And then the only other one that we have on there is the DTC CDs. And that's multi-bank, that's the ones where we got them out of state with, we talked about those last time, the interest rates are pretty high on those. I've got them staggered two to five years. They won't accrue, they won't roll the interest on those, because they want us to stay below the two hundred fifty thousand FDIC insurance, so that interest goes in the twenty nine seventy-five, too.
Okay.
And like Marvin said, if you try to set up an account for a fund number for these, it's always going to be changing, and so I think that's a perfectly fine.
Aye, Dan.
Okay. Any other questions for Don?
Yes, we're back to that. The second paragraph down, CDs don't have their own fund numbers, that been resolved?
She just talked about that.
She just talked about that with the multi-bank ones.
Yep, that's all taken care of, it's going to stay the way it is.
Well, the ICS account is, the multi-bank is a little note on the bottom of your sheet, but, yeah, I think we should just leave those going into the two nine seven five, because I think setting up funds for those, because if I cash them in, then you've got fund numbers sitting out there that are being used, if I renew them, then you got to start over. I just think that, as far as those CDs, they're so mobile that I would just leave those.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm glad that we were able to remember why we put Fund twenty nine seventy-five. Any other questions for Don?
I'm going to go back to the third paragraph then. Do we, do we need a motion to resolve that, it's called the building and improvement account?
Oh, yeah, I didn't touch that one. Um, yeah, we probably, if you want to make a motion, just to make sure it goes into the twenty one oh one, so there's no confusion, because like I said, it's been flip-flopping the last few years. I don't know why, but the twenty one oh one is the account it should go into.
That's the interest account set up for specifically, right?
I believe so, yes.
For building improvements?
Yes.
So that's where we want it going?
And that would be a thirty six one ten account, too.
And we just want it for the year beginning twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, well, the, the amount that went in, the couple of years that it was messed up was, I don't know.
We need to go back and look at.
Significant enough to make it.
But, do we want to make it, my question is, do we want it beginning of twenty twenty-two, or do we want it begin from this day forward?
This CD, the CD already renewed, do you have your CD interest sheet over there?
You guys should not copy that, too.
Do you guys have that CD sheet that had the, get all the investments on it? There should be one down there, it says building and improvement under, um, savings saving. I'm just trying to figure out, I think it already renewed.
Oh, is that in our packet here? Yeah, it looks like this.
Yeah. This one, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's confusing.
Yep, it renewed in February, so you would make it a hundred fifty thousand.
Okay. I'll make a motion, ready? Yep, for discussion, I'll make a motion. I move that building and improvement interest earned on Fund twenty one oh one be rolled back into Fund twenty one oh one dash three six one one zero commencing first of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
Twenty, yeah, I'd say you're.
Twenty twenty-three, that's what I have, twenty-three, twenty-three.
So starting in January of twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second? Is there a second?
You said interest, right?
Yes.
Interest.
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion?
I'll read that back.
Okay.
I'm going to read the motion back, just so I'm sure. I move that building and improvement account interest be rolled into Fund account twenty one oh one dash three six one one oh, beginning January one, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
All vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Steps, right?
Yeah. All right, thanks, Don.
There it is.
All right, we got Jean on the agenda, maintenance issues?
I think he has a maintenance issue. Squirt's ran out of gas.
Okay, I guess I'm just updating you on some of this maintenance issues we got. Uh, just say no, I got, uh, we got that, uh, air conditioner, it's called the crack cooler for the security electronics in the IT room. Got that fixed as of Monday.
Wow, that's great.
What's that?
Wasn't that the one that you?
Yep.
Yeah, they told me. I took it upon myself last week and I called the factory myself and I did a lot of grumbling and lo and behold, they found one off the assembly line, so.
Well, thank you, Jim. I appreciate that.
So that's up and working again. I don't know cost. Something we might still want to consider is maybe look at maybe buying a spot cooler like we were renting in case that goes down again, so we have it. Cause if it goes down, I can't guarantee that, that they only got one of those units to rent out, so. And if it goes down, we need something in there winter and summer.
Do you have any clue as to how much those cost?
What's that?
Do you have any clue as to a cost on those?
I am trying to get some, I'm working with City Air and then I'm working with Chris who's gonna do some from Core Facility, he's gonna help me get some pricing too, so.
Okay, and what would that swamp cooler, what portion of the building would that?
It's just for the security electronic room and, uh, it's, it's called the electrical room, but the server is in there. There's radio cord in there now and it's all, it's the two most important rooms in the whole place.
So it'd be sufficient to do that if the main one went down?
Yeah. I mean, we can take the chance, I know where to get one to rent, but if they've got it out being used, we're gonna be out of luck, so. So it's just something to consider, I'll, when I get that together, I'll bring it to you guys. The fire sprinkler system is still down. They, I just talked to Nova Fire and they're having a problem getting, it's, it's a check valve, it's a special check valve for this. We got the jockey pump, which we need, but the check valve is the, the company that orders the stuff for them, they've told them twice that it was shipped in two weeks and he called again. And here he come to find out they were lying to him and it's on back order. So they're trying to find a check valve from a different company, so. It's just like parts are just unbelievable to get these days, so. So we're, we're still, it, it will send water out if there is a fire, but it's not gonna be the, cover the full rooms, just so you know, so.
But we're covering our due diligence, I mean.
Yeah, we're trying. He, he was pretty upset that they were lied to, because they don't look good on their company either, so. So we're trying. Yeah, so, um, can we talk about the auction house too? Cause that's kind of a, again.
Sure.
I just wanted to remind you guys, I looked back, I got the estimate here of what you guys approved and I just wanted to get you, give you this information, it was almost exactly a year ago that you approved this demolition. It was August eighteenth to twenty-one, so.
How much was it?
Twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I've got that info here. I don't know, Todd needs it.
That probably is not valid anymore.
I don't know.
Does it have?
Does it have an end date on it or not?
Yeah, any contingency?
Well.
This was the original estimate and there's the meeting minutes.
Cause if he had signed it, I mean, if we had a, if he had signed contracts, if that amounted.
He might, depending on what the wording is. Well, the whole thing was drugged out because of him. You better on it.
Yeah, you better on it. And I mean, he's, it says to remove around two-hundred-and-fifty tons of concrete and dispose, bring in eight-hundred-and-fifty tons of sand to fill basement and a dollar fifty per ton. So it's it's based on unit cost.
I know that when you did the auction house, that one was exactly what he estimated, so I assume this one will be the same, cause he did look at the projects beforehand, so. But I just thought I'd give you that, so.
That was very nice of you to do that.
Cause I don't know where this is headed, but.
You heard what we were gonna do regarding that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I figured Todd might need that info too.
No, it's valuable information. Good idea.
Jim, is that auction house, does that have a basement?
Yep, full basement. It's actually two, two buildings. It's considered two buildings, it's two oh four and two oh six. Cause there is a wall in the middle, but whoever bought it last put a walk-through between. So the basements are separated. Common wall is to the property to the east, the, where their residents are dwelling, living in there right now, so. But the bar is separated, cause she tore down her little lean-to that was on there. She did that right away, but.
Okay.
So I think she's kinda wondering what's happening too, so. Yeah, it's a common wall.
Well, that's the tricky part, that's his problem.
But I know when I talked to Chip, he had a special chainsaw, he was gonna saw the building through the block and everything. He had a plan, so I don't know, but.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Do you need that or is that our copy for us?
Yes.
Okay, it's probably the copy to give Todd.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Go over to contract.
All right, Candy?
Geez, we stalled them up to get right on back on time, didn't we?
That's right. I don't know if stall is the right word, but.
You really are back on time.
Okay, I guess first of all, um, I had talked to Liza about trying to do something with the road at the landfill. When you, when you go up in there and go around to our new park, which is a permanent road, it'll be there forever and ever. We've been putting Scoria down on there, but we haul dirt for a day and it turns into complete powder and the dust is terrible. And so I had asked Elroy to come over and he did to, um, measure from there to the end of where the capping is at, which is, uh, what did he say? Two tenths of a mile um, by twenty feet wide. And if it was three inches thick to get that recycle from the highway department that's over by the landfill, he set, it was like thirteen semi-loads and he set a price at six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. That would go to the highway department on that to do a permanent fix on this road.
Six thousand, five.
Five hundred and twenty.
Twenty dollars. It's for two hundred, or three hundred and twenty-six tons.
Three hundred and twenty-six ton?
A recycle.
Yeah, approximately thirteen semi-loads.
So it's like less than the cost of two times doing the Scoria, cause wasn't the Scoria like thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Thirty-nine hundred, so.
And she's tried the Scoria and it's just not.
It's just, it's, we put it down and it's gone.
That's what I'm saying, like, doing this is.
And that's what the, and that's what's gonna stay there, cause that area is all capped.
Yeah.
And that would be a permanent fix and it would also help on the the filters on the machines, we've been having to change them out just about every two weeks and they're eighty-some bucks a piece, but we have to if the machine's running.
It sounds absolutely necessary, but I'm gonna ask where we are in our budget as far as funds to pay for it.
I would have to look in or get with Sam and look at everything up to date on it. There was some.
We're gonna pay for it straight up front or pay for it long run and?
Yeah, and in the long run, it's actually gonna cost us more money if we keep just trying to put Scoria down. It's not gonna, it's not gonna end up paying up.
It's just a, it's a short area, but it's a permanent, permanent, permanent road.
Yeah, we need to have a better solution there.
Cause when they put that, actually when they built that road and that, what they got, I think it was class three, it was either class three or five gravel out of center and there was nothing there. Nothing to hear the rocks do it, so basically that did nothing to it. I mean, and I don't know where, where you can get good gravel, Pembroke County. So it's just something I'd like to maybe do.
So do we need, uh, delay action or?
I think Sam's looking up.
Okay.
Not sure we have any choice, actually.
Right.
Kinda have to sell some steel.
She actually had, Candy has before she got a nice chunk. Was that like a month ago you sold that steel, Candy?
Yes.
Right? That was a good day for you. I mean, I really appreciate you making sure that, yeah.
It was good for the.
The county, you know, for the landfill.
Charge that ticket?
Right?
Yeah, I just, yeah, it was a month ago and I just got the check on seven-twenty for two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Mm-hmm, that was a, really appreciate you doing that.
And I'm not sure yet if we're gonna bail. We probably got a couple of semi-loads sitting on the ground again to bail.
Okay.
And, but the price is down.
Oh.
So I gotta argue the price all the time, I, I don't wanna give it away.
No.
We gotta hang on to it till spring and then, and then do it, so I can get more money out of it.
Yeah.
I did get fifty dollars a ton out of this, but.
Good job.
Which isn't bad, because of the price of fuel.
Right.
Cause it all, all this stuff's getting shipped down to Minneapolis or so that, that's why I can't get more money out of the deal.
Right, cause the costs are coming out otherwise.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then also, can I change the subject?
Yeah, well, Sam's looking for that.
Sure. She's gonna look at what the balance is and tell us what line item we have to charge it to.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, which line item you would want that taken out of, is that, uh?
There isn't one that says specifically.
No, there is nothing on, on roads or, I guess that Scoria. That's probably where the Scoria came out of.
And we appropriated twenty-five thousand and this is at the beginning of July, so I don't have a beginning of August. We've expended six hundred dollars out of that account, so we're still sitting at.
At how much on that one, Sam? Twenty-five?
No, it's right.
The payments to contractors, that's what we had budgeted for the.
Year-to-date, um.
Yeah, the hundred and eighty.
Eight thousand, so we're sitting at sixteen-nine sixty-eight. Sixteen thousand, nine sixty-eight, that's payments to contractors.
But is, is part of that committed towards finishing the sales?
Not on this year, no.
No, the sales came.
That's all taken care of, right?
This is just this year.
So.
That hundred and eighty that she was talking about putting in there was for doing the capping project.
So to the best of the knowledge that we have here today, payments to contractors, we have about seventeen thousand left in it?
It's just under it.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That was since July first.
And I wanna see.
Even if we go over on that line, we're gonna have to do this job.
We have to do it, yeah.
What's that, uh?
Account.
Fund number and account?
Count number is, uh, well, one, uh.
Six thousand.
Six zero zero one.
Yep. Go ahead.
Four five one one zero and line item three eight eight.
Okay. I move that we allow Candy Strand to contract for recrust pavement on her road for the amount of six thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Funds to be expensed from four five one one zero dash three eight eight. Let me correct that, funds to be expensed from six thousand and one, four, dash four five one one zero dash three eight eight.
Okay, motion by Marv, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Any discussion? Alice, you got that? Got it? Okay. Seeing no discussion, Marv?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
All vote aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes.
And the only other thing with this, I guess I never did ask them if they would ever, if that price could go down at all. If we take our loader, loader over there and we load the trucks for them or something, maybe that could be a thing, but.
Hey, that could work.
Give it a shot, Candy.
I never did ask.
Do some wheel, do some good wheeling and dealing, yeah. Do some good wheeling and dealing. Do you want orange stripes painted down the middle?
That would confuse the truck drivers. Um, okay, and then just a quick thing, cause this is a lot to explain, but you guys did get a copy of the landfill permit, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And on page nine of twelve, it just, um, it says on there, the largest approved open area is five point eight acres before a sequential partial closure must be done. Um, and I don't know, can I, I don't know how I can explain this. I don't have extra maps for everybody. But Shirley came with me yesterday and I was correct about the, okay, part of cell one, two, and three, this here part is capped.
Okay.
This is the top of our hill right now. And then this here, we, we need to probably, what we need to do is approximately three acres. And it, and this is, this goes into, it'll take care of the rest of three, four, and go into part of five here on this bottom deal, because nothing else will go in here. And the, and the thing with this is, okay, the cell six and seven, one, it's not full yet, but when it does get full, it's gonna be four point three-nine acres. And then one through five, actually, which is this whole area is six point eight-five acres, but okay, this is capped. But this part of one at the top, when you fill, when you fill this here part up, this garbage goes higher, that's why this isn't done. The garbage will be sitting higher on here and it adheres to number one cell.
Like fills the valley in between the two.
Yeah, there, yeah, this, it'll be just a big, one big hill when this whole area is done.
And that's why that one's not fully capped all the way.
Yeah, that's why it only went to here, because the ver, this garbage is gonna go higher and then it'll connect to it.
And that's why it seems like it's more acres open, because that's not fully capped.
Yeah, and it is actually technically acres open, but as long as this area that we are in right now has the, um, the cover on it, you know, has all the garbage covered, the state kinda lets up, I don't know, kinda lets that kinda go, because if we do this part, see if we, once we fill six and seven or get a layer in there, we're gonna have approximately approximately eleven point twenty-four acres open. And that does include some of this, but they won't we, you can't cap this until this gets in here.
And they understand that.
Gets to go.
Okay.
So essentially, you're claiming.
Yeah, kinda going in, it goes in steps, kinda, just to keep the acres down.
And we're only allowed to have five point eight
Yeah.
acres open.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, and so they can, I mean, we can get by with this part, but we have, we have to. But like on this here, we should try and get that covered before we get these, you know, get it two feet of garbage or whatever on this. And this won't go to the end and then that would buy us, it should buy us, well, whatever, give or take five years or more.
What absolutely has to be covered right now?
About three acres right in here.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen that?
Yeah.
This is what's capped, this has got intermediate cover. This is what we're adding to. And then this is the area that goes into part of cell three. And well, we got roads in, or approaches in here, and it would go partway into cell five.
So for twenty-twenty-two, how much do we have to cover? Three point what? How many acres?
Well, we, the, the bid was for three point five-five acres, but we should at least try to three, three of the acre, yeah, three acres would probably be okay, but if, I mean, if the bids came in better or good.
Okay, how much, what, do you, how much do you anticipate? Okay, how much, what, do you, how much do you anticipate we'd have to cover in twenty twenty-three?
Well, that's what I'm saying, three acres in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So you need this.
In that area.
When does this need to be done by?
When does it need to be done by? Well, actually, we are gonna be out of, we're gonna be out of compliance.
So the answer's no?
Well, yeah, not, doesn't have to be this year, but yeah, if, we will be out of compliance, 'cause we have two years to get this liner covered.
Okay.
Okay.
They only, hell, they only give us two years on that liner.
Yeah, and then as far as the inert, that other part of that bid on there, we can, that isn't as critical as, as the MSW.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So, if we got it done in twenty twenty-three, would they, would they allow that, if we never got it covered, anything covered until twenty twenty-three, end of twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, well, we have to wait, we can't do it this year, there's no way we can.
Okay.
We still gotta put some garbage in it, so we wanna talk about this after, you know, in, after the first of the year or whatever, and have Sherwin do like real, get permission to do real paperwork that gets advertised, so we can get more of a cost and see, and then see what the bids come in at.
Okay.
And gotta help us the fuel price go down.
Right.
That'll help a lot.
Exactly. So this is basically letting us know why this is coming at us at the very first part of next year, and how important it is to get it taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
And then if you guys want further explanation, Sherwin said he would have came today, but I said we only really have fifteen minutes to say this, so I said, he just ran over all of this with me, and I said, I'll try to explain it, and then.
No, I think you did great explaining it, Candy.
We got it.
Yeah, you did in seven minutes, so it's pretty darn good.
But we're not.
I said a lot, really, guys.
But we got more questions, though, or I do. We talked about last week that we were trying to find out how much of our closure funds that we could possibly use to use for this, do we have any more information on that?
Well, there was a thing on that, okay, there, um.
I, I read this whole thing that they gave us, and it says that you, uh, the owner-operator must have a certain amount of written closure and post-closure estimates, but I can't find what that value is.
Well, that, that gets, um, I don't know what you call it, roll-rated every year, there's, um, for the post-closure. That's the fund that has the, uh, two hundred and some thousand dollars in it, well.
See, with that information, we'd be, let's just say we have a hundred and ninety thousand in there, we're really close to that. With that in, yeah, with that, with that information, we would know how much of that we could use towards, if we knew what we had to leave in the bank, if there was a balance left over, we could use that for what you wanna get done.
Okay, there was another thing you explained to me. Um, okay, the post-closure fund, we are putting like eight thousand in there every year we've been, and we probably later just up this to eighty-three, and that's money you cannot touch.
Right.
And then, the closure fund, which is that other one that you said that we had a hundred and ninety-some thousand in there?
Okay, the eighty-fourty-nine account, just so I can clarify, so we're all on the same page, it's actually titled landfill operational fund.
Right.
Yes.
That has a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, correct?
Right, and that's what she's just talking about now.
And with that thing, um, we are allowed to use that, use part of that money, but we shouldn't actually use it all, because that fund needs to be built up, so you have, we're gonna sit down with this, and maybe when we get done, we can get you the, like, the printout on this, on, uh, like, future things that are gonna be happening. You know, as it goes in steps. Because Shannon and, uh, Sherwin went through all of this, and I think it's on their computers, and we'll have to get it off of there. And this closure is kind of for, like, the projects for doing the capping, or if you dig new cells or stuff like that, that closure fund. And then, what we should have, besides that, is, it's a, like a capital improvement savings account, which we, it does not exist right now. But that, we should somehow, in the future, if we can, if there's any money, we should be putting that in there, and that would, um, work for, like, replacing equipment and, um, the grounds, if something happens on the grounds, if you have to, you know, bring somebody in to fix capping or do different things like that, if it got washed out. And this is something we do not have at this time.
Yeah, we've done that last year with our building projects here, we started putting money into a fund, so that if something breaks, we can fix it, that's basically what you're.
And that's what, right, this is supposed to, and so we could use, that was another thing I was gonna ask, I don't know if that would be a thing, if there would be any way that, that ARPA money, if we could have for forty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand or something, to help with this, not pay the whole thing, and maybe with that, part of the closure fund and part of the money that we have on hand, if the bids are going up, we could still pull it up without borrowing money, it's just a thing, I don't know. If something, you guys will have to.
Yeah, so, when we talk about our budget, we'll talk about the ARPA money and.
You know, if it wasn't, you know, if it would help a little bit.
So, we're still looking at, if you look at this page here, the written item number one, we need to know how much we're required to keep on hand, based on how much is open. We need those estimates, if it gives us those estimates, and it says that we only have to have a hundred thousand on hand, we would have ninety-two thousand that we could use to cap this.
Yeah, see, that doesn't have to be, uh, we just don't wanna use all of it.
I'd say, the problem is, like Candy said, we don't wanna spend it all right away on this, because we need to build some up too at the same time, so there's a lot of numbers we need to really look at and work through.
But we do need to get that estimate.
Yeah, and then, but our post closure money can activate as of last year, 'cause we put, um, sixty thousand in there, instead of the thirty, we were gonna put thirty in that closure fund and thir, thirty in the post closure, but we put all the sixty in that post closure to get it up to date.
Yep, 'cause we have to have that.
They project, they project how much goes in there, it's one point four, or, it was high this year, a percentage on the money in the years, however they.
Okay.
And I think that's what Marv's asking too, for that other fund, if we have to keep, uh, you know, a certain percentage in that account.
The more we can keep in there, the better, and then we are gonna have to, we need to start building that closure fund, and that's why we should actually have that capital improvement fund. So I don't know if, too, like, on my, on my budget, I got that thing for leasing equipment and future vehicle equipment, maybe instead of having them two items, that, every year, I think, that money's just turning if I don't use it, I believe. It's sixty thousand dollars, that, if that money is actually there and I don't use it, it should probably be going into that capital improvement, and that'd be something that we can use instead of it, and I don't know if that'll work, but I, I gotta get, I have to see more numbers, I don't have, I don't have all the.
Samantha, uh, it's been referred to that Sherwin and Shannon did some homework on this, uh, how much had to be in the bank, is there any, what's your feeling on being able to capture that information off of the computer?
I mean, I can, I can do some research, but ultimately, I think it'd be better if just Sherwin and I sat down again and went over the numbers.
Okay, so you guys can get an answer to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, if she can find it, Sherwin had it, he showed it to me on his computer yesterday, so.
Oh, well, there you go.
If I have to, I can get a, print it out or have him send it to her or something, or.
Okay.
And it kinda explains how this as five years go on, and then from five years to ten years, and
I remember.
How it all progresses.
I remember you talking about that before and stuff, but I never saw it, actually, somewhere.
And it does make sense, I guess, when you didn't see it, but, and we gotta come up with more money, and the other thing that we discussed was, um, I asked, I said, it was brought up about raising the fees and stuff again, and I told him, I said, well, we wouldn't be able to do it until it would start in twenty, twenty twenty-four. And I asked Sherwin if, he thought, I said, what about another five dollars a ton, to bring it up in twenty twenty-four? And he didn't think that was unreasonable, I mean, to do, because we, we're, we're gonna have to generate this money somewhere.
Right, yep.
So, I guess we can discuss that later, too, if you guys, if one feel we wanna do that or whatever, I'll get letters sent out before April, May, and next year, to all the cities and that, that we're raising it, so they have it for their budget in twenty twenty-four, and we can make that decision later, just wanted to run it by you.
Well, with, with that, thank you, Candy.
Say what?
I was gonna say, um, what we can do even, uh, today, we can, we could up the rates out at the landfill effective tomorrow. And with the city of Hazen and Beulah, we could lock in the price that it is right now, and consider it like a contracted price. But for anyone else who brings garbage out there tomorrow, we, we have no obligation to say the price has to stay at thirty-five dollar, we can, we can up that to whatever we want tomorrow. But I understand for the cities, we just lock it at the price it is right now, cons. Now I'm starting to repeat myself, consider it like a contracted price.
Yeah.
So that, and then.
And you would just want them ones to go, 'cause we have, like, the city holiday comes to us also.
So for the cities to be a contracted price through the year of twenty twenty-three? 'Cause that's probably what they got their budget set at already.
Right.
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 Yep.
But for other entities, we can, we could up the price, but that's another discussion here, later, just to let you know.
Okay.
I think it's something that we need to discuss.
I think, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to entertain that discussion, maybe put it on for next agenda.
Yep, absolutely.
And I don't know, if I can go back and kinda get a rough estimate on
landfill.
What, so far after raising it to forty dollars a ton, how much more we took in this year?
Correct.
I thought for some reason down the line that it was like maybe thirty thousand or something extra a year, that that would would have brought in extra.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So all those cattle, the converters drop them off.
Big numbers.
All these places.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know, anything else? I don't know.
I think we're good.
No, thank you, Candy, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you, Candy.
But don't cut them out of the combines, that, that would be, you know, good. We wanna take a break before we get into the budget?
We're on the, uh, preliminary budget, yeah. What's that?
Okay, we're done with that?
With Candy?
Yep.
Yeah, we did, we approved the, the recycled asphalt.
Yep.
Is that what you were talking about, or you, something else? Yeah, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess here, um, and then we'll reconvene, I don't know if we'll call it preliminary budget review, it should just be budget review going forward, 'cause we've approved our preliminary budget.
Well, it might be. And we have time, so, we might have time, depending on, yeah, what we.
It would be preliminary.
We are half the tenth date, but there are some changes that we, that are made now because of
Okay.
the library stuff.
Okay, well, we'll take a, take a five-minute, uh, recess and come back and talk about budget.
Huh? How you been doing? Gotta watch Candy, she's on a third.
Oh, my gosh.
It's her mother's ninety.
Oh, well, that's a big one.
That's a big one.
Yep.
Once he hit that stage, he should.
Yeah, it's true.
Controls a lot of them, but they give us lead weight, and that's the way for services, so, yield prices, everything, to raise some of them rates, so. Yeah. Brian actually brought it up, and Kayla, if you went to the last share, it's been serviced, and so, we can raise some of them rates, we might as well, 'cause them, you know, big credit companies like DCI, and everything, they use us, they can pack the stuff, they make us do, they can send receipts to mail. Instead of they make us deliver it.
Oh, Sherwin, right, right.
It's crazy.
Yeah, jury trial, and I was just sitting over there, and really, the panel.
Oh, how's it going over there?
They've all got a jury seat, we can get a jury seat, and we'll, 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 we'll.
Well.
Yeah. Oh, you know, saying, yeah.
Yep.
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 It's becoming more and more apparent. At least hope anybody here, so what can we for? Get that present, that just, wasn't there?
Well.
Yeah, that's true, we didn't.
I mean, what are you gonna do?
Yeah. See that, where she took the bath off, she must, Sam said she had some questions to talk.
Yeah.
We'll get there with it. Even if they have to pick it up one year, one percent.
Right.
And what's this about, a wage study?
Yeah, this one here.
No, it's, they, if you're, you're, not, you're beyond your class, if we're gonna start people, you know, higher. The whole, yeah, I'm, Sam. Lots of updates or changes.
Oh. I can't remember what she said.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look it up, it just.
Yeah, Sam has it. It's just because, like, the cost of living stuff wasn't added to it from the form, so it's not that much changed. It's just, it never was updated per cost of living.
Sure, if we start, starting people, that's more than what's on our existing.
That's what I live on, her name's.
But it's gonna get ugly for us.
You tear your deck? I think I remembered what I wanted from those road ladies. This is the budget. What up here?
I'll call this, uh, meeting in Mercer County back to order, uh, at eleven forty-five. We have on our agenda, uh, preliminary budget review.
So I have some good news, and some, I missed.
Other news.
Um, after a few meetings with Linda from the Association of Counties, and with, um, Beth, Beth was concerned that, um, with the mill levy amount that we were submitting for the library. So we spoke to Linda and worked together on it, and, um, what Linda suggested is that we actually should be joining, um, all of our combined budgets, so as you can see, I printed off a, another copy of the library worksheet, and so you can see the revenues, and then what they're requesting for expenditures from each McLean County and Mercer County, and then it also tallied up, we tallied up our total valuation.
Yep.
So now we are looking at, from a three point zero seven mill levy to a three point five, and if we would've went down, they wouldn't have received their state funding for that much, so, uh, we need to adjust that. And then also.
What pages is that library on?
Nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen and twenty.
Thank you.
And then, the good news is, there's a letter that I had printed off that Beth shared with me from the state tax director, that we should be using our gross valuation, so that's including the homestead credit. When I calculated, um, the valuation during our preliminary budget, it was just the taxable valuation without the homestead credit. So that helps us, and, you know, bring, to bring up our value and brought down some of our. So that helps us and, you know, bring, to bring up our value and brought down some of our.
So valuation should include homestead credit?
Correct, and there's a letter from the state and they're explaining more in detail, that's the gross value we should be using.
It raises our valuation to what?
Fifty-two.
One nineteen, four thirty-seven?
No, no, that's the old one.
Okay.
Be fifty-two.
Fifty-two, seven twenty-five, four zero eight.
Fifty-two, seven twenty-five, what?
Four zero eight. Now, I also printed off the worksheet regarding, um, since we're still
That's what I was wondering.
Kind of in discussion about wages, um, I just wanted to recognize also that the recorder's office was asking for more than the seventy-five cent cost of living and also the, the road department was asking more than the seventy-five cost of living. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't oversee that again with either one of those departments who were requesting more than the cost of living. It is on the preliminary budget under their request, but when we finalized the preliminary budget, it was just my recommendation with the seventy-five cent cost of living and then whatever we discussed for Cindy's wage.
Okay.
So, so what we approved was what was requested?
No.
No.
What you approved was what I recommended with what I was just calculating across the board with the seventy-five cent, except, for the exception of Cindy's wage. That I had bumped her up to a level seven with the cost of living, including her PNC.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're still under the mill, fifty-eight point, that brings us to fifty-eight point six five, um, with those two adjustments. And then the library, and then if anybody else has any other concerns or if they can offer anything that they want to discuss.
I have some stuff to discuss, but let's, let's talk about if there's any questions regarding what you just brought up first.
Yeah, so do you guys want to bump that, put that, those amount, see, we can move funds around. Uh, just as long as, you know, our overall is not going up, with the exception of the library, Linda said that, um, we can justify that and articulate why that had to, that needed to change. If it was our question. So, I don't know if you guys want to add those wages back into the calculation to increase or to, they're requested, or keep my recommendation?
I think we need to keep the recommendation, I don't think one department should be able to raise when the others don't get to.
With Cindy's also?
Cindy's is an, is an exception, I think we need to figure out on Cindy's.
Yeah, so.
What we need to do with hers in the first place.
Yeah.
And I had only printed off the adjustments that I had created for your guys' but ultimately I'm gonna be emailing this new copy because it's, it kind of changed across the board with our taxable valuation increasing, so you'll get a new copy.
So the one we got in the mail is out of date now?
It's right.
Okay.
Okay. No place in the general fund did we record the homestead credit value? I'm looking at pages four and five, that's the revenue for the general fund, typically that's where the homestead credit, some of it gets allocated. So when, what I'm saying is, we raised our valuation by a certain amount because of homestead credit.
Right.
Should include that, but prior to getting that information, did we already have homestead credit in revenue for any parts of our budget?
We do. That looks like here.
So that would have to come back out.
Homestead credit.
Yeah.
Thirty-four thousand.
Where are you at?
Page four.
Four.
On intergovernment revenue.
Yeah, I were, and we must have skipped over that.
Yep.
With Linda.
So you, you have a revenue in there, and then we changed the valuation.
To include.
To include it.
So it's counted twice.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily counted twice. Well, it was, the revenue was budgeted, but it wasn't in the mill levy cost or, you know, valuation.
Right.
So, the revenue is accounted for, but how we calculate the mills has changed. So it adjusts what the mills will read, but we're not adjusting the amount of tax revenue collected.
Right.
Does that make sense?
I disagree.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm kind of, that's how I'm interpreting it, but I could be.
If we raise our valuation from fifty-two, one, one, nine to fifty-two, seven, twenty-five, that means that every mill is going to give a little bit more money.
Right.
And the reason we got that is because we are using homestead credit. So we can't use homestead credit as revenue because we're already adding it to the valuation, so.
So it shouldn't be a line item of revenue then, because it's incorporated, okay, I got you.
I'm gonna, I'm going to confirm that with Linda.
See what I'm saying, Gina?
So it shouldn't be.
I know what you're trying to say.
But yeah, but I mean, it, it shows as actual revenues in twenty-one.
Because that, but this is taxable valuation, it's not actually revenue.
But because of the mill levies that we're assessing, that valuation is not higher, so we're going to get more money for every single mill.
Right.
And the reason we get more money is because we took it out of homestead credit.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna confirm with Linda if we can use the, obviously, I mean, we use the homestead credit as revenue.
Swishy.
And also use it as taxable valuation or if we have to keep those separate.
Thank you. That's one, one of the questions I got with your information.
Shot down my good news.
I did not mean to be a doomsayer.
I don't know if that's really shot down, it's just. The calculated mills will go down if we don't change our budget.
Yep.
It's a higher taxable valuation.
Okay, I'm going to go to an old question that I've asked before. And that's, I'd like to know, and I sent you those questions this morning, Samantha.
Yeah.
Now, for you guys. You guys, now I'll say the same thing I've said before. Had these thoughts occurred to me earlier, I would have got the information to Samantha earlier. I think I sent it to you a little after five AM this morning, and I want to know how much CARES money we have in the bank and how much ARPA money is in the bank, because that tells us what we can possibly use towards some of our projects. And we need, and it's a question that I've sent in the past, never was specifically answered, now if I look at my my fund accounts sheet, which we get, uh, if you guys total up all your trial balances. It says that CARES, no, this is gonna be a bad deal here, Samantha, but Fund twenty-one oh four, that's our ARPA money. On your trial balance is titled CARES Fund, but that's because the name kept getting swapped back and forth. That's actually our ARPA money. It says we have one point, one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four dollars. Twenty-one, twenty-nine. That's public safety, it says we have two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. That to me is our CARES and ARPA money. Now, I gave you guys a sheet like this, I think I gave this to you guys last week. It looked like this, remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's using the best information I have, and I want to know how much we have in CARES and how much we have in ARPA. And I don't need that today because I got it to her eight o'clock on Wednesday morning, the day of our meeting. Okay? Can you please research that, those questions I gave you and give me an answer sometime this week?
I'm trying to understand exactly what you want because I thought I've answered this multiple times, because what is in there and what we have apportioned to the building maintenance and to the
Fire, or the, yeah.
landfill.
Isn't, who?
And then I have given you an estimate of what we should have left over.
Right.
I mean, the balance shows you what's in there, but we don't have any bills that have come through for the building.
Okay.
So it's not actually what's available, or your mark.
If we look at this sheet and I used your numbers, and it says that the ARPA money, we have two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents. Okay. I'll use that, and you gave me the landfill, you raised the number because I thought I had an incorrect value, and you corrected.
Correct, and that was the minutes.
Yep.
So that two hundred and eighty-seven is what is after expended from what we're allocating to the building and to the
Yep.
landfill.
Yep.
And so what is your question then?
I think you just answered it, this here sheet is accurate.
But what's in the counts right now
Will reflect differently.
Exactly, absolutely true, because some of the bills aren't paid yet.
Right.
Exactly, I'm aware of that.
And so you just want what's in there now?
No.
Because that's what you're getting from the trial balance?
I understand that.
Okay.
You explained that to me just now, that these values that I have on this sheet tells us what we actually have, that's expendable money.
There you go.
That hasn't been allocated.
Yep, it hasn't been allocated, because everything else has been talked about, but we're gonna talk about that.
But what do you say is left? Of the ARPA money, after the bills, after what we apport, apportioned already out of it?
Mm-hmm.
What would be left? Two eighty-seven?
Twenty-eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents.
Oh. Just held me out a second, what, what did, what fund did we use for the radio care system or for the, uh?
The Siren? Twenty-one, twenty-nine.
And what's left in that one after?
We told it the CARES money one though, I thought we did.
I don't know that, what's left in that fund, we dedicated five hundred thousand towards Siren, how much has been spent and how much is left, I don't have that information.
And that's the email that Marv just sent this morning, so I told him that I was gonna find the research of what we've done and where that's at.
For that one, is that?
The Siren funding?
It's just stuff that we should keep track of, so.
Well, yeah, I.
Okay.
Because I thought that was the CARES.
And then, the reason I'm asking that is, it's gonna lead into another question. Part of our COVID money was used for law enforcement center payroll. I don't know why we would have done that. It was done in, uh, when I brought this sheet to the auditor's office, uh, they came and handed this back to me, says, Marv, we dedicated in December last year, uh, hundred thirty-three thousand towards law enforcement. And, and, uh, in twenty-twenty, they dedicated hundred twenty-three, hundred twenty-four thousand almost to law enforcement. Why would we use CARES money to pay for the law enforcement salary?
Because we had to have it that way, that's even like when I worked for the state, we had certain monies that was allocated due to CARE, um, due to COVID because we were essential workers, and that had to be used only for salaries.
It had earmarked it that way, yeah.
Like you couldn't use it for anything else except that, and you had to block it in with numbers and a system that would say, we have this many employees that were essential workers at this time, so therefore we can get this much money for the salaries for that.
Pretty right, that's what you called.
So they set it up as a reimbursement, essentially?
And that was a different amount of money that?
Correct, that was a whole different amount, other than it was specifically only to be used for that, and that is it.
And you call that CARES money?
Mm-hmm.
How much?
Coronavirus relief fund is what it's called. That's fine, I'll accept that explanation.
How much CARES money did we receive?
Well put, I, I knew it had to go to.
Yeah, you couldn't do anything else, and it was very regulated.
We dedicated five hundred thousand
Yeah.
for Siren. We gave one hundred twenty-three thousand, six ninety-one to the cities, and that was for recommendation. Shanna gave me a county spreadsheet, our actual extra expenses due to COVID was this much, so if you subtract that, we have this much COVID left. But this isn't accurate either because I have to subtract these two numbers that they put in over here.
Those came out of a different funding source though, didn't they?
No, they came out of CARES money. So what we have left in CARES is roughly half a million dollars, someplace.
I think we need to get the terminology maybe corrected a bit in this because I know you're calling it CARES money, but it was actually COVID relief.
Okay.
For the deputies and stuff like that.
COVID, COVID relief.
So that was a whole different funding that we got even, it wasn't specifically out of there, I think it came from a different funding source. Because it, it was very specific, you had to like really plug in numbers as to who was essential workers, so I think that came from a different source or funding than when you talk about the CARES money.
We don't, to my knowledge, we've received state, it's all federal, ARPA money is all federal money, but some of it came directly from the feds and some came via the state. State came via from the state, that's House Bill fifteen oh five. And that's, that's one source of money, the other is the federal ARPA money. The only other money that I'm aware of is called Corona Relief Fund, often referred to as CARES, I'll call it Coronavirus Relief Fund or COVID. That's the only three sources of money that I'm aware of that we're getting, now you're saying if this money came from someplace else, you'd have to tell me what revenue stream it came from.
And that's why I'm saying we need to look into it because I think it did.
Okay, that's fair.
And I just want to clarify too, I, I, you're saying that I haven't answered your question and you've asked this for weeks, but the question that you're asking that you have, from what I'm understanding, what you requested weeks ago has already been touched upon, and I believe that we've answered that, I just want to clear that up, correct? Now you're asking new, a new set of questions that I received this morning stating that you want to know where the law enforcement funds are coming and going from the CARES.
Okay, that was explained today.
Okay.
That's answered today.
Right, and I.
Liza gave me an explanation.
I just want us to be clear though, that going forward, I have answered your question so that we, you know, I don't want you to come back and, and say that I have not answered your question.
I am, I don't do that.
You just didn't say.
No, if I don't, don't understand your questions, I'll repeat the question, but I'm not saying that you haven't answered me.
Okay.
Okay?
So we've been, we cleared it up then, what your concerns are, except for now you want to know where the funds from the law enforcement was coming and going from, correct?
I think Liza explained it, but the answer, I could use some more clarification, and that's what she says, it needs to be very specific, but it's CARES money. It's Coronavirus relief, we only got so much money from the state, and I know what monies we got from the state because they run that report.
I do recall that, yeah, we had to do some very specific hours and time.
Hours, it can only be used, it can only be used for payroll.
Yeah, we submitted that almost
That's what I said.
Almost like a bill. And we got that money just returned to us.
Right.
It's like a voucher, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
So you've.
And I don't know if, and trying to, I don't know if I'm ma, convoluting it or making it worse, but I don't know if that money was a totally, total separate payment, so to speak, or if it was included with, um, the money we, we received such as CARES money.
And that's why I think it was a totally separate payment that we had, because we knew we had, it had to be separated and had to be so regulated.
Yes.
That it wouldn't have come in the big lump sum, it would have been in its own individual one to be divvied out appropriately. Okay.
I understand what you're saying, Liza, and I appreciate you explaining that to me, that, that was, and I, like I said, I accept that explanation very well. What I don't see is that I'm aware of all the funds that the state sends us, they have a report on the treasury, and I don't see any other source of revenue that may came from, but like you said, we need to be very specific and see if we can find that, and I'll go with that, so. Right now, I'm still to my, to the best of my knowledge, those two LEC payments were required, and they came out of the COVID relief fund. Okay, so that answered that. Um, the other thing that I have is, I had a meeting with Brian Fuchs yesterday, Brian Fuchs works with the Department of Transportation and Travis is aware of his name, right?
Oh, yeah. I know the name.
He helped, he helps us explain, uh, what road funds we can use and how we can use those road funds. And I've been working with Charles Ankins also regarding those, and I've given you guys some estimates for the county road based on the information that I've had with meetings. for the county road based on the information that I've had with meetings with Charles. But yesterday I got some more information from Brian Fuchs down in Bismarck, and that's why I gave you guys this new sheet here today. I'm going to try to explain some of this as best that I can. Number one, I want to talk about Title VI. Title VI is, if we do funding in a certain way, we have to fill out, we have, Title VI is required. And Title VI is a very time-consuming and in-depth program that we have to be, have to use for our funding. And there are a whole bunch of, if we get some of the different brackets of information that we have to fill out, sometimes if we get, we don't have correct information in there, we're more susceptible to audits, and the more of those that turn up negative, the less positive, more susceptible to audits. Avoiding Title VI is a, is a really good idea. Another thing with Title VI, the county has to pay one hundred percent of the project. We have to pay for the complete thing, have to cash flow the whole project. Then we ask for reimbursement from DOT, and DOT is going to go back to your Title VI program and see if you have all that filled out right before we get reimbursed. Now, there's an easy way to get to not use Title VI. And that is if more than fifty percent of our project is funded through the federal, through the federal aid that we can get, then you don't have to use Title VI. So there's, when I went through all these projects, and some of these numbers are from Brian, you got to keep in mind that he was only advising me of ways to finance. On Mercer seven twenty-seven or overlay, the total cost, this is going to be complicated, but total cost is twenty, two-point-eight million. If we use one point four-five million for three million, or four-five, I mean, of federal aid, that's fifty-one percent, I think, is what it comes out to, now we don't have to use Title VI. And, but anytime you use those percentages, the county has to pay a certain percentage, so we are obligated to pay that three forty-two, four ninety-seven. Okay? We have a balance left over that we could probably pay with House Bill fifteen oh five funds. House Bill fifteen oh five, if you look down in your notes, we have one point four-five-two million, so there's sufficient funds there to do that. Now, the federal aid, we get about two hundred and fifty thousand every year. Right now, we are at about one million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty. That's what we project that we're going to have at the end of twenty-twenty-three. That is not equal to that, what we have up there. The amount on top there is more, but you can borrow ahead. No cost. We can borrow ahead on what we're going to get in twenty-twenty-four and use it there, and it's perfectly fine to do so. That's one of the programs that the state offers us. So using that information, we could lower the cost of that Mercer twenty-seven overlay, stay out of the Title VI regulations and, and expenses that are associated with it, and still get that project paid for. That's the biggest thing that I wanted to share with you, and the notes that are on this here. When we receive state aid, now let's look at Mercer County Bridge. We can receive state aid, it's called eighty-twenty split. It's actually eighty-point-nine-three percent. Anytime we get that matching funds, we have, there's a balance left over. We have to pay that balance before we can apply any other matching funds. That make sense to you, Travis?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that was explained to me, and that's how that works. So I took all the main projects that we had budgeted for this year, and I came up with the total cost of what might cost our county. And if you look at that, it's substantially lower than what I have budgeted, that we put on for the line item for the budget. So that's, it's a possibility. I'm doing, I'm just sharing information. It's a big possibility. I'm not sure that I would recommend lowering our budget, but this might help us in future years, having some funds available to do other projects. Now, I did add, I'm going to lobby for this again, that airport road, that point-six miles. We receive so much ARPA money and cares money or COVID relief money that I think it's nice to improve our county in one, at least some way. The ambulance has to slow down. When they're taking people to be airlifted out, they have to slow down on that road, and that defeats the whole reason that you have an ambulance, which is immediate, fast response time. The lower the response time, the more success we have in helping the patient. So that road has been a problem and has been discussed many times, so I added that on there just for your guys' information. It does not have to be included, but to me, it's a worthwhile project, and it looks like we'll have sufficient funds to do that. Over on the right-hand side, you see some more blocks. That's the engineering costs. Now, I sent a letter, I didn't think of all the questions when I was talking to Brian down there. I'm not sure that we can use House Bill fifteen oh five to pay engineering costs. And that's a question that Charles had when we were discussing some of this stuff too. So I'm hoping that we can, but I sent that letter down to him this morning, and hopefully we can do that. So all I'm really sharing with you is data. But this is a real good possibility in how we could pay for those projects this year. And I'd like you guys to consider borrowing ahead for one year on our federal aid that we get from DOT. We get two hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to be borrowing eight hundred, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from twenty-twenty-four's funds, if you look at my notes.
So when you say borrow on that, essentially we're seeking reimbursement in a different year?
Right.
Or how does that?
No, in twenty-twenty-four, we get another two hundred and fifty thousand, but it will be reduced by eighty-five thousand because we used it in twenty-twenty-three.
So they let us collect it in the head?
Yeah.
So it truly, truly is a borrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
So I'm just trying to, because I do have the road department trying to give you any, any possibility for us to reduce our mill levies and save the taxpayers some money. And it's just good business practice.
Another question.
Sure.
Probably for the board is, I see, I mean, this is a huge project overlay on twenty-seven. Well, the fuel costs and everything, petroleum and all those were quite expensively high. What would we, could we possibly extend twenty-seven another year out?
Or cut it in half? There's no reason, Travis brought it up, why not just do half of it?
Or cut it, yeah, or cut it maybe in half. That's true too, you know.
Yeah, pushing projects down the road has got us to where we are today, is that
Right.
We're ending up, someplace you have to pay Peter.
Yeah.
But another thing we have to keep in the back of our minds too, and I know that there's authors just this week who have voiced some big concerns about the Prairie Dog funds. And a lot of them don't want to bank on those because it's not a.
Yeah.
And, okay, we talked about that at our previous meeting, and I think what we talked about, that if we don't have confirmation before we approve it, I'm going to vote no.
I don't believe we're going to get confirmation from the state on whether or not we're going to get those by.
Okay, that was one of the things that even Jean, Jean and I both talked about, that is that we can't rely on pie in the sky.
Right.
Right.
And that's one point nine.
How was that, Sam?
I mean, that was a big chunk of our.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where was that revenue required?
I think it's on the general, boy.
No, it shouldn't have been the general, I don't think.
Well, it would have been on the.
Well, we listed it under twenty-one, twenty-seven.
Okay.
Which is township roads. So the House Bill fifteen oh five is on there, and then the possible Prairie Dog, which is the one point nine eight eight, you know, and that's.
That's why I'm saying I don't want to change our budget. I don't want to lower it this time, because we don't know, and we won't.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I'm, and I know you don't want to cut projects, but we're including that right now.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to cut projects if we don't want to get those ones.
If, you're, you're correct. But if you look at the sheet that I just gave you, what I have for construction cost is six hundred and ten thousand. And I think what we put into budget was a whole bunch more than that, so we might have that difference already covered. That one point nine million? You know what I'm saying? Part, part of it's going to be, if we can fund it this way, we wouldn't have to rely nearly as much on Prairie Dog. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, in, in glancing at this stuff, I'm looking at page twelve, unorganized road. There's another place where homestead credit is recognized as revenue. So depending on where that was all allocated throughout all of our budget, we'd have to, once we get an answer, we might have to subtract that back out. I think that's, where's my notes at here? I think that's all I really wanted to share regarding the roads, that someplace we're going to have to schedule a meeting and decide how we're going to address the final numbers. Right?
Well, I mean, we're discussing it, we're going.
Yeah, but we have to, I mean, we're going to have to make a decision and put that, change the budget accordingly. How do you guys want to do that? And I don't want to wait till the end of September to do that, because what if it takes two meetings? We have land use administrator that we're looking for information. We've got some road funds here. We've got homestead credit that we're looking for information. We just.
Didn't we set the final budget hearing for the twenty-first, correct? Because we need to have it done before that, obviously.
Yeah, what I'm thinking, do we want, okay, that's fine, if we think we can do it in one meeting.
No, she just take the fact.
No, I'm saying that we have to have it decided by that day.
Yep.
You know, so.
I think the Treasury sends out pre-tax information based on our preliminary budget, and it has to be out this week, right?
Estimated bills, yeah. Well, not, it doesn't have to be out this week. I was very close to that.
Okay.
I'm going to try to have her estimated bills by the end of the week, and then she can send them out.
Okay. I don't think I have, let me see if I have anything else.
So just to kind of go back to, I just want to make sure in our general fund with the salary requests, we're not making any adjustments there. It's reflected on our worksheet, their request, but it's actually budgeted under my recommendation, so.
Yeah, the only one that's still up in the air is Cindy's, just because we need to check into those, if we can combine that together.
But also, she's requesting ninety-three thousand, and I have eighty-two, I believe, is what I budgeted.
And their present salary right now today is?
That's with them combined?
With them, yeah. With them combined, it's seventy-five thousand already. And seventy-five thousand, well, we already talked about that. We're going to get some more information before we move forward.
Okay, so don't make any adjustments now, but we could possibly make some adjustments later.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. We have to get some answers first.
So basically what I'm hearing is what we have it right now is what's going to be used for the estimated tax statements?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that after you find out from Linda about the homestead?
We are, yeah, so I'm trying, I thought maybe I could call her right now and get clarification on that, which I can try her on the phone.
Sure.
You ran out of cord.
Yeah. Did we have anything else on that?
No, I think she just wanted to talk about, but, oh, we're waiting to hear if we can put the measure back up.
Oh, the measure, yeah. I know we didn't finish it because it didn't cross enough.
I'll also get information whether we can use House Bill fifteen oh five towards engineering costs, correct?
Yeah, it makes a big difference.
So we've touched on the levy road fund, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Let me, I'll make a statement about that too, if I can find my paper yet. Give me a second here. It's not going to change the budget, though.
No.
Hi, I'm sending a transcript over right now. So what I'll do is I'll get confirmation from her and email it out to you guys along with the, if we are making, staying with the adjustments, or if we're going to keep our same valuation, but you'll still need a copy of the library. But that might change too, then, because we use our value with McLean companies. So that's, I'm going to have to get a little bit back as well.
Oh, yeah, do you, because their, their mill levy is way higher than our mill levy, so. So it's projected, I think, in dollars, basically, and then you have to set your levy to the dollar, because, I mean, if they have two mills, their two mills are way different than our two mills, you know.
Right, but we have to, we have to levy the same mills.
We do.
Yeah, so, but what we did is we, so we combined our value together and did the worksheet with all of our expenditures and revenues together. So we're going to, I'm going to have to change that as well if, if we can't use the gross value, since we're including the homestead credit as a revenue.
Yeah.
So.
Just for your information, I took that homestead credit, that's on the general fund, at thirty-four thousand. Divided it by fifty-two, seven, twenty-five, and it came out to point-six-four mills. So we would be over, no, we'd be at fifty-nine point-two, so we'd still be under the sixty. If we have to do that.
Did McLean set the, the mills for the library? Yeah, did they set their mill amount?
That's what we did together.
Okay, so we're both at three point five?
We're both at three point five.
Okay.
But that's going to change if I, if we can't use the gross value of our valuation.
The amount of, the, the mill would have to stay the same, but just the amount of revenue that goes to the library would change?
It's possible to change, because our value is going to possibly change going out.
Yeah, but I mean, we have to hold that mill levy.
Yeah, so last year.
So the, the amount will, will likely change, but the mill levy won't. Because, because we have to match.
Because we have to be the same as McLean, is what he's referring to.
We're going in the opposite fashion in that joint, because we have to.
Correct.
Yeah. The, the actual dollar might change, but the mill levy has to stay the same, because we have to match each other.
Right, the mill levy will have to stay the same.
Yeah. Anything else on the budget?
Um, I don't know, we did, last time, I think that Dawn would touch upon it, but she sent me an email, and you guys want a copy of that? I mean, she did a little bit of research, and from what I understand is that we were over three million dollars going back to taxes. And we used five hundred thousand of that, and from what I gather, we've just socked away the rest of it, so that's maybe something possibly that we can discuss further, look into maybe using that in some parts of our budget.
So is that figured into our Treasur's report at all?
I don't, I don't ask you that.
Okay. What you're saying, there's possibly two and a half million dollars out there? Okay.
I'll mention one more thing here. If I can say this intelligently. On our general fund, we're showing a transfer in, I think of seven hundred thousand, is that right? That transfer in is coming from which funds?
I don't know where you're seeing the seven hundred thousand, they have to help on the transfer in. The five hundred thousand for the boiler replacement from the CD?
That's a CD that comes true in November, right?
Yeah.
So.
That we were gonna use for the boiler.
So, if all, if all of our, if all of our money, including the money in the CDs, is spoken for in all of our funds, those two mon, like I told you before, all of our funds total equals what's in the bank. So, we're taking that money from another fund somehow. It's not, it's not extra money that's in the bank, it's, we're taking money from, we have thirty funds, and they make up all of our money, including the CDs. We're taking money from a fund. I guess my question is, I want to know where we're taking, which funds we're taking that money from.
And I think there's some miscommunication there too, and I think, I, from what Dawn was saying earlier, it sounded like that's kind of what she was applying to, but from talking to her prior to this meeting, it was explained more that that is funds, that's investments, separate from our budget.
It is separate from the budget, but it is funds that are invested, but all that invested money is accounted for in all of our different funds. I don't see where we're getting the five hundred thousand that we want to transfer in there. It comes from other bank accounts, other funds.
Comes from other funds, but how do those funds get money in them? They're not necessarily earmarked for certain projects, were they?
Yes, if they're road funds, they, it wouldn't be road funds, because that has a sole top, separate entity, separate tax base, but yes, all of the funds that we have, I don't know how else to say it. If you total up all the funds that we have, that equals all the money that's in the bank, and that includes the CDs. So, if you're taking money out of a CD, you're taking it money out of those other funds. I'm not sure if I can find a better way of saying it than that.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, but like when we, say we discussed this twenty-nine seventy-five fund, is that actually earmarked for anything, or is that just the fund that we used for?
That is earmarked for, we don't know where it's earmarked, because it includes all the funds that we have in our, in our, all of our, all of our banks, includes everything.
All the five hundred thousand, that was, we said that we're gonna take that out of CD, correct?
Correct. The CD includes what's in the bank, in the other funds.
And that would have been, for the lack of better terms, leftover money, that's why I was putting a CD, it wasn't money budgeted.
No, it's not leftover money. See if I can, I got a sheet right here.
Well, we didn't say, well, we're gonna, we didn't levy an amount of money that was supposed to go into a CD. It'd have been money, um, that was, that was in the general fund, and it got invested in a CD. Or money that didn't get spent, and it got put into a CD. That doesn't mean it was allocated for anything in particular, it may have been at one point, but it didn't get spent.
That's not true, Gene. All the money.
Well, then how do you end up with, how do we end up with three million dollars in CDs?
We end up with seven million dollars in CDs.
Right. Because our budget doesn't.
If it's not spent yet, it's in those funds, but instead of having all those little fund numbers, you only have a bank account, you have a checking account, right? And the rest of our money, we, instead of leaving it sitting there not doing anything, it's put into a CD.
We got that part, but the part is, you're saying that all the money that's invested has already been spoken for on some other project. How would, how would we amass that much money if we actually had projects to do?
Let me show you this then. These are all of the funds that we have money in, right? You total all that up, it's this much money. This is all the money that's in the bank, it's almost identical. So, we can't take half a million dollars out of here unless it comes out of one of these other funds. Can't do it. If you take half a million dollars out of here, there's no, there's no one fund that says we have extra money, five hundred thousand, it comes out of some of these funds. It has to come out of there. If all of these equals that, we take part of that away, it has to be subtracted from that. I'll show it to Gene.
Yeah, I don't.
These are all of our funds, and we put money in there, and we're budgeting every one of these funds for activities.
But we don't fund our budget, our accounts off of these investments. We fund it from revenue, from generated from taxes.
So, this, what I'm saying.
No, I don't fully agree, I, I, I can't, I, I can't agree with that, I'm, you're, you're saying this money is this money, or this money is this money. I, I don't. No. It's, if this is money we are budgeting, so to speak, that which is in those CDs is separate.
I will disagree.
Okay, that's fine.
That's just where we're at. You can't take money out of here unless it comes from one of those funds. It's just impossible to do it. This money is not money.
Well, it, it may have originally come out of a fund here, but it, it's, I'm not an accountant by any means, but I'd almost say it's unaccounted money, so to speak, it's in a different fund, it's like, you said you needed five thousand dollars to pay your water bill, and at the end of the year, you only paid forty-five hundred. And the next year was forty-five hundred, next year's forty-five hundred, next year's forty-five hundred. And then eventually you got two thousand dollars left over, and you said, well, I'm just gonna put that in a CD.
It's not what it heard, Gene.
Okay. That, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
This isn't, and the CDs too, I mean, those have to be locked away for a certain amount of time, we can't just use those funds, so that's where I'm having the confusion, I'm trying to understand why when that comes due, it wouldn't be available. We're not using those funds right now, they're, you actually can't touch them, actually, when you.
Okay, I, what, what I'm saying is that.
Put it into a CD.
I don't know how to explain it any differently, and apparently I'm not explaining it.
Should we bring Dawn in, maybe she can clarify?
She can clarify, yep.
Would that help? Or is, is nobody, everybody felt comfortable with how this is going?
Well, I, I still would need to know.
The only place.
The difference between how I understand how Marvin is trying to, I'm gonna use the words, how Marvin understands it and is trying to explain it. Because there's quite a difference there, because the way I understand it, we'd have this three or four or five or six million dollars sitting there that we could effectively spend, and the way Marvin's explaining it, no, there's not. It's, it's in funds, it's allocated.
That's, that's correct, the last, latter part is correct, that's how I explain it.
So, which is a big difference.
And it's allocated in where?
All of, all of these different funds, just look at this, Gene. If this is all the money we have in our funds, and it equals that, that's all of our money. The bank says we have this much money, and it's equal. How can you take half a million dollars from this unless it gets subtracted from some of these funds? How can you do it?
Can't answer it, I can't answer your question, I don't know.
If, if indeed there are.
I know what you're sh, what.
If indeed these are all of these funds, is that possible?
No, with what you have right there, no.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget? If not, did we get a clarification on the November election for that measure?
I have not. And I just want to call him Brian.
While we wait on that, you want to do portfolio updates?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I'll go first, I have nothing.
Okay. Marv, do you have any updates?
No, other than my meeting yesterday, and then the Zut Custer helped yesterday also, that's it, thank you.
Um, I haven't had any meetings with my portfolios recently either, I guess Water Restore Board meet, met last Thursday, but they're moving forward on a drain tile project out by Bula Bay, or otherwise, that's the only updates I have. Liza?
Um, I haven't held an ambulance yet this month, but, and then Candy was in here already, and Carmen was in here already. The only other thing I wanted to bring up, or something that we went and paid attention to, is our solar ordinance and our memorandum for that. I think it comes up in September, so I think we need to keep a real close eye on that, and I don't know where P and Z is at for it.
Can I add something to that? I received a letter from somebody who's interested in putting up a solar farm in this county, so we definitely need to follow up more around on that. And we have a meeting tomorrow night, right? Planning a zoning?
Right.
Shake your head like this.
I said, okay, I'm not on it, so.
Just shake your head.
Basically, you usually have to remind me, because I'm outside with no phone, and I get a whistle bit. Liza, I will try to get an answer for that tomorrow.
Thank you, because I've also had somebody emailing me about it too, so, yeah, okay.
Solar, okay, thank you.
Solar ordinance, yeah.
Wayne?
Do you have enough time? I mean, I, I was pretty busy.
You were pretty busy.
Yeah. Not like Gene over there, he cut it short. We did, we didn't have a weed board meeting, they had individuals that were sick, so they figured that, you know, it's good enough. We had a regional airport meeting, and we are gonna be meeting with the state. They do that kind of annually, they go through, anyhow, the end of this month, we meet with with the state aeronautics down there and go through various projects. So, that's coming up down the road, and, yeah, Jim was here, and it was good news to hear our air conditioner's working, and and things are up, up so far alright. And, and yeah, and right, Marv, I'm glad, or glad you mentioned this, this solar deal, yeah. We'll have to get on that, right, Marv?
Yep.
Yeah, because there is interest of setting, evidently, there's leases and this and that already, to set up a solar farm over here by Glen Herald, I think, so, it's right around the corner, that's it. Two minutes or less.
Two minutes or less. I think she got ahold of him, but on the measure, if we didn't make any changes, we could probably just approve it to be put back on again, though.
What are you referring to?
The measure for the.
Because we're losing the mill levies.
We're losing the mill levy in twenty-four for the roads, and we were moving it from one mill levy to the other.
Wish Samantha was here. What I was thinking to myself was that when we put it on the ballot, the language was kind of told that we had to be very careful, so other counties got theirs approved, and I was wondering if we could contact those counties, see what they had on their ballot.
The language they used.
The language they used that might help us so that we can.
Do another job of explaining it, say it another way.
And my, and my concern is, I think we have to have something approved now, so we can send it to get it on the ballot. Because I think if we wait till the September seventh meeting, I don't know if it's done in enough time.
So, we can still get stuff on our ballot?
Well, because that, that's what they're, the sixty day, is it sixty-four days that, before the election, that it has to be received, and then absentee ballots start going out like sixty days before?
So, you're looking for something saying that we're going to put this on the ballot?
Yeah, we'd have to approve to put it on the ballot.
Additional, additional ten mills to offset the.
The, the ten mills that we're losing.
Right.
Well, we're losing the whole dang thing.
So, when do the absentee ballots go out? September eighth?
No, that would be the absentee, the applications.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's September one, it's during the balance, since I'm feeling them. We may get order the ballots before, and so.
But that's what I'm saying, I think we have to make a decision today, because if we don't make it today, then we can't get that measure on the ballot.
And then we have to wait.
Then you have to wait two years.
Right.
Well.
When we're already passed, it's in twenty twenty-four.
Oh, it'd be during twenty twenty-four.
Right.
Because it, because it expected it to end in twenty-four.
Okay.
Tax lady, that was, if he's looking for a motion.
Well. Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we need, if, hearing what you said, we need to get it on the, on the ballot, so we could make a motion to put it on the ballot, but what language do we use?
That's why I want to look at their own language, all we have to do is say additional ten mills on county tax levy, such and such, but I don't have that sheet with me. But if we had an old ballot, we'd have that information. Because there's.
And I think we need somehow, in the language, word it so people understand, it's two.
It's not a new.
Lev, is it two levies are gonna be combined to one, so you're not, we're not actually upping, that was the question I got asked.
Right.
I got asked, they were saying, they understood that we're gonna up the mills by like ten mills, and I said, no.
No.
Where it's combining two into one, so right now, if it's sixteen mills, it's still gonna be sixteen mills, but we can only, as a commission, approve ten. So, they're taking the two and they're combining them.
And it was kind of.
Did you get an answer on the mills?
Well, we, I don't have an official answer, but he did say that if the measure did not pass, he's kind of curious on why you guys would want it on another ballot if it didn't pass the first time. Is the first question, and then he said that if you do want to add it, we're gonna double check the scepter code, you only have, he believes it's six months in between ballots when you can add it to another one, but then if it doesn't pass again, then you can't put that measure on the ballot again for years. So.
So, we might not even be able to put it on, because we already had it on primary, and it's not six months.
We could possibly, that's what we're gonna double check, is the timeframe, and if you guys wanted to, put it on there, if it doesn't pass again, then we have, can't put it on there for a few years.
Well, if we don't put it on there, you won't have enough tax levies available after twenty twenty-four to pay your bills.
On the roads, yeah.
Yep.
So.
And.
Well, there's his answer.
There's twenty-five counties went for it, and we were the one county in the state that didn't pass it.
That's not all true, they're.
Well, that's what I was told, but.
Uh, yeah, the reason, reason so many of them passed, a lot of them just reenacted the ten mills, they were just continuing it. There were only like seven counties that actually were asking to add another ten mills.
Gotcha.
So, they already had it, they could renew it.
And he did mention that, um, yeah, anyway, I'll get all the confirmation from him. But he believes that there is a possibility that we can add it again to the November ballot. But then if it doesn't pass, oh, the turnout, since there was very little voter turnout for the primary, and our numbers weren't that far. and our numbers weren't that far apart, then we might have a better, if we have a better turnout in November, then it possibly could pass. So, you know, just, he said, look at all of those.
He didn't give you a deadline date that we'd have to add?
Like when we have to have it.
No, he said, he can still show me how to put it on the ballot if we decide to do that, so I'm assuming that we have passed any sort of deadline.
Yeah, but I mean, there, there would be a deadline because you have to get it on there before ballots are...
Yeah, and that's why he's gonna get, he's, he was on the way back to the office, he's gonna look at that century code
See, this is what's, this right there is what's confusing.
Right.
It's ten mills to fifteen.
Depending on that deadline?
It's a total of fifteen right now.
If we can do it at the next, next one, or we might have to call a special meeting.
I think we might just have to call a special meeting.
It combines the ten and the five, the, this one and this one.
Well, and in the meantime too, then maybe we can get whatever language some of those other counties used.
We're using fifteen, it's going away completely, that's a, that's a different levy, farm to market is, is a different levy from the state. That's going away, period, it's going away at the end of twenty twenty-four, god. In order to help us, we're gonna add, we're gonna add ten mills to this levy, because this one's going away. You know, we're not really combining it.
We're not combining, we're increasing one.
Increasing one to offset the loss of the other, correct?
Right. Yeah.
So the same county...
We can't even, it's confusing even for us to try to explain it to each other.
Yeah, but we got it. So, um...
And that's what we need to get out to our, um...
So what's, what's your, what's your point that you were making again, we had to...
I, I'm saying, we have some questions right now, we're probably gonna have to have a special meeting if we would like to go forward trying to get something on the ballot. To make sure we're some, within deadline, because I think if we wait until September seventh, I think we're gonna be too late.
Okay.
And I mean, we have two weeks left here in August.
Do you know how this?
Yeah. Or...
And, and I, and I don't know if we can, uh...
Thought you were asking, I don't want...
It wasn't yours.
And I don't know if we set a date today, or if we want to have that information.
Why don't we just do that, that way I can make sure that it gets on there no matter what, if we decide that's what we're gonna do. And he's, like I said, I should have that information today, so...
But we're looking at some other information too, that we're looking for in the budget, do you think we'll have it? If we pick a date today, do we want to wait till we get all the information?
Do you want to include the budget with the election for the special meeting?
Might as well.
Probably the information regarding the land use administrator salary?
Oh, something new coming up.
All the stuff that we're looking for. And September, what, seventeenth did we say?
September seventh is our next meeting.
Regular meeting out.
But that's cutting it really close.
There's nothing wrong with meeting on the thirty-first of this month, gives us two weeks to get information.
Hey, well Samantha felt that a lot of it she could get done way sooner.
You guys pick a date, that's fine.
Can you, do, do we have to pick a date at today's meeting, or can you contact the chairman and once you've got your information gathered and he could, he, whatever, could contact us, or I guess he could contact you and tell you what, uh, what date would work then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. Chairman or auditor can call a special meeting.
Oh, the auditor can too, well then...
I'd say find out the information and then we'll send out an email and if we can get three people to a special meeting.
Yeah, just send out...
Okay, and I just want to verify so I'm not missing anything, land use admin salary, election measure and our evaluation.
For the special...
Home state credit.
That's included in the...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Language for... Mill levy change, yeah.
Does that cover that PERS thing or not?
Sam, with the land tax, does that cover PERS with that?
Where we want to combine, will we have an answer or not quite?
Well, if we combine it, it will be automatically submitted to PERS, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we do it as an hourly rate, then it automatically is, because that's the...
But I mean, if you guys want to include her salary and hopefully I can get confirmation from Todd about what we need to back pay her, or we can set that for another, yeah, what do you guys want? You want to discuss, discuss that at the special meeting?
I guess you can put it on the meeting and as long as it's advertised, whenever we decide to have it, then it can be on there. It's easy to remove stuff you just can't add.
Yeah.
Chair.
Right.
Okay, any other business?
You'll have to...
I think we've covered another one, do you think?
You'll have to text me whenever, or call. You won't catch me maybe on the, that way so you don't...
Wayne will receive a personalized message.
Yeah, personalized text or...
Okay, any other business? Seeing none, meeting adjourned?
Moving on, Tony.